One hundred and forty-eight attendees. It looks like it's pretty stable. So I think most people who are trying to get in are in. So whenever you're ready, Louis.
Okay, so we'll call this meeting of the senior schools educator board of education to order. It's now six thirty-six on November ten, and we're meeting by Zoom with all the members present. Thanks to everybody who's joined us. I think we the plan for today, or maybe I guess we the first item of the business is the agenda. So I'll just discuss what we propose to do to change the agenda. We have a couple of substantive discussion items today. One is to hear from our the committee that we've convened that's helped us generate a proposal and some ideas for the senior tax exemption. This has been, you might have heard a discussion of the senior tax exemption for many, many months, but we're nearing the end. And we would like to move that up first for two reasons. One is to give the panelists the opportunity to sign off. They've they've invested more time than they thought that they need to in in meetings with us. And so we thought we'd do that first. And also, this will allow us to get the word out about the exemption in this proposal. So the idea is first to have a discussion about the senior tax exemption, and then following that discussion to get an update on the reopening plans, and and some board discussion, all to precede the public comment period. We'll then take comments from all of you who'd like to to give them. There's a signup sheet. I'm going to ask David unmute himself and explain for those who might want to sign up if they haven't already what the how to do it. So could you please explain that?
Yeah, so in the agenda where you saw the link to the meeting, there is a section called public comment. And in that public comment section, there's a link to the public comment form. So just click that, fill out your information, and that will get you on the list.
If you experience any problems signing up, send a text, send an email to the board at decatur dot net. We will work to give you your your spot. It's a three-minute comment, you know, three minutes, three-minute period per comment. But so that's the plan. So I think we need a motion to amend the agenda as described. We have a motion.
I move to amend the agenda.
All agree?
Oh.
All right. Thank you. So that's that's what we'll do. The first thing that we need to do before we get into it, I should have done it already, is to have a moment of silence and then sort of play. So let's start with a moment of silence. And now, David, if you'd present a flag. I'll say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've already done the agenda. Next is minutes. We don't have minutes from our prior meetings. They'll be presented at the next meeting. So that brings us to our spotlight, and it's following the spotlight that will have the discussion of the senior tax exemption. So David, would you please introduce the spotlight?
All right, I think we have a video for the spotlight, or do we have is Rochelle gonna do a presentation for Shayna?
Yep, video.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Go on mute.
Shayna, you need to make sure to share your audio in the Zoom settings so we can hear the video.
Dr. Mary Ann Banks. Hi, I'm Rochelle Laustrian, principal at Decatur High School. We're excited to be your first spotlight of the 2021 school year. First, I'd like to update you on some of the racial equity work that we're doing here at Decatur High School. Dr. Mary Ann Banks wrote a grant for us to get some funding to work with Lee Manois of Stir Fry Consulting. In September, he facilitated a roundtable conversation between 10 of our students. This was viewed widely in our community, and these students talked openly about race and their racial experiences throughout city schools of Decatur. Then, in September, October, and November, Lee Manois will be facilitating, has and will be facilitating conversations with the Decatur High School staff about their experiences here and around the country with racial racial equity and racial healing work. Those conversations are ongoing, and I am really excited that we're beginning to take this first step forward. The Decatur High School Equity Committee has also started some book studies and podcast studies with our staff. We have about eight of them ongoing right now, where teachers are discussing together what they've learned in a variety of texts and podcasts. Now I invite you to watch a video production put on by our staff here at Decatur High School through Closeup, as well as the Beacon Hill Black Alliance for Human Rights. Instead of doing Closeup this year, they got very creative in how to involve students in both the life and legacy of John Lewis, and also sharing about their experiences as students and what they've learned from John Lewis as well. So enjoy.
Hi, my name is Kristin Embry, and I teach social studies at Decatur High School. And for the last several years, my partner and I have been taking kids to Washington DC as a part of a close-up organization. And one of the highlights of our trip every year is the time that we get to go on Capitol Hill and interact with our senators and representatives. And of those times, one of our most special moments is when we get to engage with John Lewis's office, which is an incredibly special place, and he's an incredibly special man. And the kids are always very excited about that time. This year, because of the pandemic, Ms. Gonzalez and I were attempting to try to find a way to keep Closeup alive, because we knew we couldn't attend the trip this year. And with the recent passing of John Lewis, we were trying to find a way to merge these two things that were so important to us.
So that led us to this idea of trying to honor John Lewis and working with the Beacon Hill Black Alliance for Human Rights, and a group and community indicator that is seeking to honor John Lewis with a statue in the square. So we thought it would be good to engage students and children in that conversation, because they're such an important part of our community. And as a result, we sent out a call to students in middle school and high school to reflect on how John Lewis impacted their lives. The results were amazing, astounding pieces of work for students, and we hope that you enjoy them by looking at them this evening.
And we're in the fifth district right now, aren't we?
It's true, we are.
So. Has he helped you in your life, Dr. Anderson?
He has, in a couple of concrete ways. When I was first starting my physical therapy practice, which was also in the is also in the fifth district, he I couldn't get my Medicare number, and a practice has to have a Medicare number in order to bill Medicare and to see Medicare patients. And after seven months of waiting, I actually contacted his office and met with him and his health liaison, his health legislative assistant. And within two days, I had my Medicare number and was able to build Medicare. It's one of the things that your congressional representative and their office can really help you with.
John Lewis has impacted me in many ways.
You, as young people and as students, as such creators, never become bitter, okay? Never hate, okay? And be kind, okay? As Dr. King said, on occasion, it's better to love than to hate.
The words John Lewis just told me are words that I will carry with me for the rest of my life.
He's so incredible because he fought for everyone who looks like me. Nevertheless, he achieved nonviolently. Even when they beat him down to black eyes swollen in the street, cracked his head to the white meat, he knew it had to be done, because equality is the air that we breathe. He didn't care if the tear gas made him weak, down on his knees, knee on his neck, screaming, I can't breathe. He did it for hands up, don't shoot me, please. You're treating us like animals, like I'm no human being. But I won't let it take a toll on me. We're gonna rock the vote, get our voices heard in more than just the streets. I was fifteen when Emmett Till got killed. That could have been me, he said. I can't breathe, he said. You got the wrong guy. It wasn't me, he said. My girlfriend was fast asleep, he said. Imagine being in the comfort of your own home in the bed. Six shots later, you're dead. Jacob Blake, seven bullets to the back. Now where's the justice for that? But Senator Lewis said, always keep the love in your heart, because the hate will never win. But Mr. Lewis is hard. I haven't bled blood, but I still feel the non-healing scars. I thank you for making your story ours. You taught me to fight peacefully, but still fight hard. You're a deep part of our history. We will carry out your legacy. We will vote, hold our fist up in pride, and continue to march with integrity. Trust me, Mr. Lewis, I don't know when, but this good trouble will pay off in our democracy.
Hi, I'm Audrey Ferguson Brown, and I am so humbled and honored to be the grand prize winner of the John Lewis Creative Expressions Contest. I was compelled to contribute in this competition, honestly, because of everything that has been and is continuing to go on in this world today. I feel like this year has been a huge wake-up call that equality matters. Black lives matter, and love is always stronger than hate. John Lewis is an exceptional representation of all of these things, and I felt like a poem would be a nice way to express that. I wanted the visuals to be filled with emotion so that the viewer could understand the context and urgency of my words. I use my form of art to show how John Lewis has impacted the progress and progress to come of justice, equity, and fairness in our world. John Lewis and his work will never be forgotten. Generations and generations to come will carry out his legacy. Thank you.
All right, that was awesome. And just so you guys know, the folks who helped put all that together are online if you have questions for them. But that that concludes their spotlight presentation.
I just wanted real quick to shout out Ms. Jennifer Gonzalez and Kristin Embry for giving students the opportunity to go to DC, to see different processes, but then to be able to meet John Lewis. I mean, what a privilege. Thank you all. And to Audrey, wonderful job. All the students, thank you all for honoring and lifting John Lewis's name and all of your creative expressions. And congratulations again to Audrey.
I also just wanted to thank our teachers who have worked hard. And I know I've seen them out in the community fundraising before to be able to bring more students on that trip. They really put forth a lot of energy above and beyond to make that trip happen. It's fantastic. Thanks to the students for sharing your talents. It's very, very powerful. And it was a beautiful way to honor John Lewis. Thank you.
Woo, that was that was awesome. That was really awesome. I had the privilege of going through a Kingian nonviolence journey with John Lewis at Emory. When I was there, it was a two-day training, and he came in for day two, and he wrecked the agenda. He just started telling stories, and no one in the room would go back to the agenda because he kept telling them. And everyone in the room, there were about fifty staff and faculty members at Emory, would just listen. And it was one of the most impactful days of my life. And we were supposed to go at four, and I think I got home at nine. And he had nowhere to go. And he was just like, you all are educators. I'm here to teach you all. And I just had those flashing back to me. And that's the point of poetry, right? It's made it supposed to make us think of memories and and things, and a lot going on in our country, and making our voices matter. And congratulations, you accomplished that. That was beautiful.
I tell you what a reminder of how to be during times like this, when he said, now remember, kids, don't be bitter. That one is going to sit with me for a while, because I tell you that is extremely hard to do. But I will take those words that he said. So thank you. Thank you, kids and teachers for for showing that particular clip, because that was a reminder that I need in this moment. And I love how one of the points stated, you know, walking across the John Lewis Bridge. That was that was pretty awesome, putting it out there. So thank you so much for all you guys do. That was beautiful.
I can't add much to what's already been said, but I agree with it all. And I did want to echo the thanks to Ms. Gonzalez and Ms. Embry for that really important experience that they're providing to our kids. And I don't know if if, you know, probably nobody can take credit for Ms. Brown. But man, that was good. And congratulations, that was powerful. And I'm so proud that you're that you're one of ours. But that was that was just very, very well done. So thank you. Thank you for all that went into that. Do we have any questions, or? Should we then move on to our next agenda item?
So yeah, so I think our next one then would be senior homestead exemption. And I think I saw, go ahead.
I'm gonna suggest we we it looks like it looks like Hans is on now. And so I thought we might need to stall a little bit. But if the committee is ready, then we can proceed to have this discussion in which I think we'll begin with. Well, maybe we need to provide a little bit of an introduction. So, you know, currently we have a senior home homestead exemption, which if you're sixty-five and older, there is no school tax owed on your residential home. That exemption is going to sunset at the end of next year unless it is renewed in some form. The school board is committed to renewing it in some form, but we need to limit it because it costs much more than had been anticipated when it was enacted. And it's more than we as a system can afford. And so for the past couple of years, we've been working to collect data and gather information so that we could come up with a good proposal to renew it. The key to that effort really was a committee that we convened and asked to serve representative of a number of organizations indicator to develop a proposal. Basically, what happened is that the board set a budget and said, all told, the homestead exemptions from the school tax need to cost no more than 4.3 million. Prior to the senior exemption being enacted four years ago, the total cost was about 3.2 million. So what we were really budgeting is another million, and I think it was about a million point two, to go toward this new tax benefit to try to keep seniors indicator. How to allocate that was a question that we asked this committee to come up with a proposal to figure out for us. And so they've been hard at work and have invested a great deal of time and effort and thought and and into coming up with a proposal, which is what we're going to discuss now. With that lead in, I think I'll turn it over to Paula or to Hans.
And I see Hans there, too.
Anyone, so.
Hans and Paula, let me know if there's anyone else from the committee that I should be searching for.
And.
Thank you all.
Good. Paula, could you please name the members of your committee just as you get started?
Oh, you would ask me to do that, and I wouldn't you. I have to go pull that back up again. I know most of them. Actually, if you guys will unmute Hans and let him speak, I will I will wrap the end of this with the members of the committee. How about that?
Perfect. And I think Hans is unmuted.
I'm I am here. Thank you, everyone. So the work of the committee, I think we had two defining parameters for one, what we wanted to accomplish with the senior homestead exemption. The first was, and frankly, the foremost was, that even as the schools were looking to reduce the total cost of the exemption, we felt it paramount that we ensure that the exemption protected the most vulnerable in the community and the seniors who truly had a need for the exemption as defined. So the objective was to identify or to come up with a rubric where we could identify those individuals who who truly needed that relief and ensure that the maximum amount of that relief was still provided for those individuals. And then, once we knew that the 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 vulnerable were taken care of, the maximum amount of relief for all other seniors would be available. And so the way that our recommendations are starting to shape up and that we're putting in front of the school board and the superintendent for evaluation are actually two exemptions in replace of the one current exemption. The first will be for individuals between the ages of sixty-five and sixty-nine, under or up to a certain income limit. And we define that as eighty percent of the average median income, the federal adjusted median income of the Decatur area. And that number, I believe, is fifty-two thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars a year. So individuals that hit that income level or below will receive this exemption. And then the second exemption is for individuals of the age seventy and above. The exemption will apply to all individuals of the age of seventy-five or of the age of seventy and above, regardless of income. We are currently working on identifying the exact exemption amount, the amount of your home that you will be able to exempt. But it is no less than a hundred and sixty thousand dollars of your assessed value. And so just a quick piece of definition, your assessed value is the county's definition of half the value of your home. So if you have an exemption, it's a hundred and sixty thousand dollars of assessed value. That means that if your full home value is three hundred and twenty thousand dollars or less, you aren't paying taxes in that rubric. And so minimum exemption value is a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We think we will likely be able to get it above that number. But for now, let's talk around a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So the first exemption, under a under an income of fifty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars, between the ages of sixty-five to sixty-nine, you get a hundred and sixty thousand dollars of your assessed value exempt. For individuals seventy and above, you will get a minimum of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars exempt on your assessed value, regardless of income. And with those numbers, we're confident that we're going to hit the target set forth by the school board in terms of the numbers that they want to see in 2025 for the overall cost. And we'll be able to provide a substantive benefit, both sixty-five to sixty-nine for individuals that have need, and seventy above, a meaningful benefit for all seniors ages seventy and above. And that is the structure of the rubric that we're putting forward right now. There are still some variations around what assumptions we're going to use that we need to talk with about the board to try to get that number above a hundred and sixty thousand. But we can state with confidence that we aren't going to be below that number going forward. And I look forward to any questions that the board may have, given those given those two proposals in that rubric.
Did you clarify the point, and you might have already, but did you clarify that that the exemption would apply, you know, if you're seventy and above, and your home is valued at any number, that you still get the first hundred and sixty thousand dollars of your assessed value, you still get this benefit? So this is a benefit that will apply to everybody?
That's a great clarification, Louis. And yes, so it should be very clear that if you're seventy and above, there are no constraints. You will get at a minimum a hundred and sixty thousand dollars of your assessed value exempt. And we hope to make that that number higher, but it is going to apply to all seniors age seventy above. And part of what drove that is that the original seniors, when this exemption was first passed five years ago, that were sixty-five, they will be able to broadly keep some large level of exemption now that they're seventy and as they're as they're moving beyond that. So this is preserving as much of the So, this is preserving as much of the exemption as original as we could for those who got it in the first place.
Thank you for the, for the proposal. Do we have board member questions?
James, you look like you're going to ask a question.
I, I just was going to ask questions that I've discussed with you, but just sort of you or Paula. But how many households, you don't know, or do we think are impacted by that 65 to 69, you know, gross income area?
I, so the, the number that falls specifically below or above, it's, it's, it's difficult. I'd have to go back to the report and look through it to pull up that exact number, but it's on the order of hundreds. It's not a couple of homes. We're, we're talking about a substantial number of.
It's, it's about 200 to 300, according to the ranges they provide.
Gotcha.
Yeah, my notes actually say 225 plus. So, yeah, we're right in the, right in that sweet spot.
And that number, again, for the record, was pulled from what?
So, we know the values of the homes that pay taxes within the city of Decatur. And so, the researchers with Georgia State that actually pulled the full analysis together have a number of data sources that are allowed to or are able to estimate rough income ranges for the various properties. Now, it is not a precise calculation. We should be clear about this. They have to run a number of scenarios and build something that's called a histogram. It's a statistical way of analyzing a range of possible outcomes. So, when Dr. Duty says there's a range of homes that fall within that amount, it's because we're defining it around those characteristics, but it is a fairly tight band. And so, when we say that it's on the order of 200 to 225, we know that it's, that it's within that range, that it's about those, those numbers. We're not able to say with precision that it's 217 homes, for example. But we can say with a very high level of confidence that it's between 200 and 225.
Thank you.
If you look at it, go ahead, Heather.
Oh, I was just going to say, so you said there are some variables that we need to decide. Should we identify what those are and discuss them? It sounds like we have a good idea of where we're going to be, but that we're trying to get a little bit more precision around the final numbers. So, what are the, what are the variables at this point that are still up for discussion?
Hey, before we, before we talk variables, let's do that the very next thing. And I wanted to make one more clarifying point, which is to ask Hans. And if you don't have the answer, I just calculated it, it's fine. But can you put the benefit, 160? If you have a homestead exemption, which allows you to deduct the first $160,000 if you're assessed. What, what does that save?
So, I apologize, Louis. Your question clicked out on me right there. So, I, I didn't get the, it sounds like you're asking me, what is the dollar amount if you have a certain home of a certain value and you can deduct the first 160,000 of value? What does that save you?
Correct.
I'm going to trust your calculation on that because on, without a calculator, me running a millage against that, I would be guessing.
I came up with $3,600, which I think.
That doesn't sound wrong.
And so, so the way to think about this is that if you've got a home that's valued at $320,000 according to the county fair market value, your taxes, the school portion of your taxes would be $3,600. You would no longer owe any of that money. If your home is worth, fair market value according to the county is higher than 360, and you calculate what your tax would have been and then deduct from that amount $3,600 of it. So, it's essentially a $3,600 benefit to, to homeowners 70 and above and to owner, owners within the income limit who are between 65 and 69.
Correct. And a minimum of $3,600. Yeah.
I apologize for the interruption. Heather, do you want to ask about assumptions?
I just, I mean, it sounds to me like we are requesting, we're going back to Georgia State to help us refine our calculations a little bit to max, to help us, you know, maximize the amount of assessed value that homeowners can qualify for to deduct. And so, I just wonder, what are the outstanding questions that we need to discuss as a board in order to request those calculations?
The, the core outstanding question is what assumption do you have, does the board have around the growth rate in the cost of that exemption? Currently, the $160,000 is based upon us assuming that the overall tax digest is going to grow at 7%. And the actual cost of the exemption itself will also grow at 7%. If we are putting forward a capped exemption, which we are, it's not actually mathematically possible for the cost of the exemption to grow at the same rate as the overall digest. And so, it is reasonable to assume a slower growth in the cost of the exemption. If we are assuming a slower growth in the cost of the exemption, that fundamentally translates into a larger amount of assessed home value that we can exempt. So, it would be above $160,000. I think it is, it is safe to say that it's, it's shaping up to be the recommendation of the committee. And it's based on some of the analysis that I provided today that a growth rate more online with about 5.5% is reasonable. And so, the request to Georgia State would be, what is the maximum assessed home value? It would be somewhere above $160,000 that we can offer if we assume a 5.5% growth rate on the cost of the exemption.
And again, can you explain where that growth rate, how you calculated that growth rate? Because I think that that was a point of discussion because there are different ways to calculate that growth rate, depending on how many years you calculate it over. It can be quite variable. Like, if you look at it year over year, some, some years, the growth rate was less than 1%. Some years, the growth rate was closer to 15%. And so, you know, I guess it varies quite a bit. And so, how did, how did you decide that the average growth rate was, you know, that we should consider is 5.5%?
Yeah. So, let's start with a discussion around the 7%, which I think everyone has kind of wrapped their heads around at this point. So, the 7% is for the overall value of the digest, not just the exemption growth rate. The, the challenge that is facing us is the last 10 years have been a particularly volatile 10 years. We have, at the very beginning, the, we're coming out of a recession and we're seeing exactly, like you said, Heather, a 1% or even less than a 1% growth in the value of the digest. But then we also had a couple of years in the middle there, 2015, 2016, where Decatur saw 15, 20, 25% jumps in the value of the digest, mostly because it was picking up from the very flat years that were prior. So, that, that, it does make long-term projections of growth very difficult to do, right? Because you have all those, those, that volatility. In the last four years, so from 2017, basically, 2016, 2017 since, we've seen much more of a stabilization in the valuation of the digest in both the state and the city numbers. The county numbers are a little bit wonky, but the state and the city numbers are fairly stable and they are, you know, in the 7% to 7.5% growth range. And that seems like a reasonable number for us to use for the growth going forward. So, another important, this is a little bit more of a complex mathematical point, but it's important to understand. The exemption itself, once a home exceeds the value of the exemption, the cost of the exemption is fixed for that home, right? It doesn't ever go above, if it's 160, it doesn't ever go above that 160 number. And so, the growth rate of the cost of that exemption on that house becomes zero. Everything above that value gets taxed at the same rate of growth that the overall digest grows. And so, you have a proportion of homes that the exemption cost growth is zero because they've exceeded that amount. And so, it is not mathematically possible, since some of your homes have exceeded $360,000 in value, it's not mathematically possible for the cost of the exemption to grow at the same rate that the overall digest grows at. It will grow slower. And so, the question I think you're asking is, well, how much slower? What is a reasonable estimate of how much slower? And so, this is where it gets a little bit difficult, but we'll look at some of historical numbers. Historically, when you, you were, I think the best numbers that we have are 2014 to 2016. You had a stable period of time where the homeowner exemptions that were in place at that time were growing, and they grew at 6%. While the taxable portion of the city of Decatur, the city schools of Decatur budget grew at about 9.5%. And so, that should give you a little bit of a sense of the difference between the rate that the taxable portion grows, the 9.5% versus the rate that the exempted amount grows, which was 6%. So, that's like a 3.5% difference. The challenge with using those numbers and the reason for being a little bit more conservative in your estimates is because that was right in the midst of the maelstrom where all those numbers were coming back up out of the recession. It's also only three years, which is not a really good length of time to run a historical model. And then, the last part of it is, e- even though y'all budget a 9.5% growth rate, you don't generally collect the same amount that you budget. And so, that that 9.5% is a little bit smaller than that in what turns out that you actually collect. So, it's reasonable to say, even though you budgeted a 3.5% difference between those two numbers, saying that a 2% number is more realistic is, is probably a conservative and reasonable number to settle on. And so, if we're looking at a 7% to 7.5% number and we say 2% off of that is 5.5%, that's how we arrive at saying 5.5% is probably a reasonable number to assume for the exemption cost growth, given what we think the digest is going to do in the next couple of years.
So, we're planning to, sorry, I was just going to kind of summarize what I heard, but so it sounds like we're going to request GSU to calculate using the growth rate as a variable parameter. And we, and if we're hovering around, you know, between 5% and 7%, just as a question for the board, but maybe it's that we ask them to go, you know, to calculate 5% and 6% and 7% growth rates and not calculate the four. I mean, that, I think we agreed at the last meeting that that seemed a little too low for, for where we are. And, and we can discuss that, but that sounds like that's kind of one of the outstanding questions. Is there another or is that the only outstanding variable that we are needing to discuss? Okay.
And if I could, if I could clarify, for all practical purposes, GSU has already calculated the 7% number. And realistically, has already calculated the 4% number. So, so we're looking for those middle numbers. If you want to do a 5, 5.5 and 6, then that's, that's probably the three numbers you should ask for.
Okay. And to me, that would just help me understand how, how much of an impact does this make? I have a feeling that we're pretty close and that it might not make that much of an impact, but it will give us a comfort feeling as to, we're getting as precise as we reasonably can be, given that we've made a lot of assumptions to this point.
The, the growth rate is actually quite impactful. So, just to give you a sense of scale, at 7%, it means that you can offer a $160,000 exemption. At 4%, it means you can offer a $220-ish thousand exemption. So, it is, it is actually quite sensitive to the, the scale. And so, I, I would suggest that we just allow them to run it based on those half percent increments because they're, they're going to vary a fair bit. And, and I know that, you know, in the overall scheme of, of things, the difference between 160 and 220 might not sound like a lot, but it is, it's $120,000 of home value. So, it's, it is actually quite impactful.
Right. So, it would help us, I think, to, to see those numbers so that we understand the financial impact of the choice we're making.
The one thing that I want to step in is that we, we need to talk schedule a little bit. And my expectation for this meeting and my hope is that we will pick a number now. And that, because we're basically out of time and we have to have a final proposal for, to be adopted at the December meeting. And, because that's our last meeting before the, before the session begins. And that, what this is going to require is because we keep, you know, we're going to have to go back to Georgia State University again. They're going to have to spend a couple of weeks cranking the numbers. And my hope is that we can agree on an exemption, I mean, pardon me, a growth rate to use for this purpose and then ask Georgia State to run it. And then, and then basically have the proposal. And we could then leave this meeting with an agreement or an understanding that the exemption will be no less than $160,000. But that if we collectively agree to use a lower figure for the growth, say 5.5%, say 6%, that we would simply find out the exemption amount that correlates to that growth rate. And that's what we would vote on at the December meeting. To do that, we have to just, we're going to have to make a decision. We do have a sense, as Hans said, of the spread. And since we're not really considering a 4% number, that's too low. The range at this point is really between 5.5% and 7%. David, were you able to, David appears to be frozen. Are you live up there?
I'm here.
All right. Were you able to generate the closest estimate that we could get, you know, quick and dirty?
I was not.
Okay. So, the range we're talking about is probably between, what, 160 to somewhere around 190?
Yeah, that's probably.
Probably. Yep.
And so, that's, you know, it's, it's, it's not nothing, but it's also, we've got a, we've got pretty good parameters set. And, and I would suggest that, that we sort of look at it and make a decision based on historic patterns, comfort level with, you know, the rate and just run with it. And I'll also add that I don't think there's any real magic to this. I mean, we can look at the year-over-year growth that Hans provided in 2012, it was 8.6. The next year, it was 10.10%, the next year, 9.4, 6.9, 7.6, 7.6, 7.9. You know, it's, there's a span and it's volatile. And so, whatever we pick is going to be wrong. We're just making a reasonable projection. And in the same way that our growth in the digest is going to be wrong, our, our estimate or our projection of the growth and the cost is going to be wrong. Now, Hans is certainly not wrong. He's correct that the cost of the exemption is going to grow more slowly than the growth in our digest for the reasons that Hans explained. And so, I think it is reasonable that if we, this is my opinion, that if we're using a 7% growth rate for our budget projections, knowing that that's not going to happen, it's just a projection. But I think it's reasonable that we assign a lower projection to the cost assumption, logically consistent. How much lower, we, it's a total stab in the dark. The, you know, what, should it be 5.5? Should it be 6? Should it be whatever? I don't know. And, but I think the range of reasonable choices at this point are between 5.5% and 7%. And it seems to me that we might throw it open and see if someone has a, has a thought along those lines. And, you know, we should probably also try to wrap this up reasonably soon so that we can move on to the other discussions.
Are, are you looking for committee member perspectives on this or just board member perspectives?
Let's get the board members' perspectives first, at least.
I, after, you know, kind of looking at this and, you know, hearing the different comparisons, especially in the last meeting, you know, I personally was okay with the 4% growth, just because I felt like that we would have the opportunity to impact more people. But I also understand being in an unprecedented time that, that's taking a little more risk than, you know, than is probably necessary. So, I, I'm definitely leaning toward the 5.5 growth with the exemption being around 190,000, 195,000. To me, that seems like, you know, a comfortable place for the board to be as well as increasing the impact that we have to our vulnerable seniors a little bit from where we are at the 160. So, that would be, that would be my vote. So that would be, that would be my vote if we were voting right now.
We're gonna vote soon, so. Dana, it looked like you had, or James, sorry.
I also think that the one eighty K having the numbers, I mean, we know one sixty is safe based on the numbers that we have. And I feel comfortable saying that a hundred and eighty K and we're gonna go back to Georgia State with those numbers and do our due diligence and say, if we get a four, if we get a five, if we get a seven, are we gonna be okay five years from now, given a hundred and eighty K? And and given the numbers that they've given us, I think that we are. It can't really be seven percent. We've done enough work. We talked to the city. We've done enough stuff. I think that a seven percent growth in the digest seems about right. I'm more interested in the sixty five to ninety and the and the income based. I'm excited about that and what that provides for the city and the seniors most in need. And I and I don't want to overlook that part. I know it's a smaller impact on the budget, but, you know, to me, that gets on the mission and and the committee. And I think that a lot of members of the committee were excited to see that. Jiggle their heads, but go ahead.
To be clear, what I think we're gonna vote on, at least what I propose we vote on, is not the exemption amount, but instead the growth rate. If we, and it sounds like at a hundred and eighty, I think that we, I think that, for instance, we could say a five point five. But then we're gonna accept Georgia State's analysis and we're gonna accept in order to maximize the the amount, which might be a hundred and eighty, it might be a hundred and ninety. I don't know.
Okay, I see what you're saying. Well, but then we had also talked about it would be nice to to speak to seniors in this community, given that we are at the last hour and say, we feel confident that you're gonna have a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in assessed value to to deduct from your from your house. And so you're going about it the other way. I misunderstood. I think five and a half, I mean, that's a point and a half off of what the growth in the digest would be. The original Georgia State study says that we do have a, you know, we still do have seniors who are gonna leave at a certain age, drop off and that sort of stuff.
Dana?
I was gonna say, initially I was with Tasha in terms of the four percent, but Hans's explanation tonight makes me lean more towards the five point five as well. I'd be more comfortable with that.
Okay, I guess that leaves me. I will say initially I was feeling more conservative, just given our drastic budget cuts this year. I mean, we were handed a state budget cut of five million dollars last spring and had to pull that out of our reserves and we don't know what the future is going to hold. So not only was I feeling conservative about protecting the school system, but I was also feeling the same way for protecting the rest of our taxpayers, because we have to remember that this money is coming from somewhere, you know, it's, we are giving the seniors a well deserved break on their taxes and we're we are working hard to focus it on the most vulnerable seniors. But the rest of us taxpayers are sharing the cost of that. And so it's like a three legged stool. I feel like we have a responsibility to the seniors, but as well we have a responsibility to protect our school system. Knowing that most of our costs are not variable, they're fixed, there's teachers' salaries and staff salaries. And also that, you know, any costs of this are basically being passed on to the rest of the taxpayers. So just knowing that it's hard to predict the future and especially during this time, I was leaning towards the seven. But I do understand now that that that's perhaps overly conservative. So, you know, I would be willing to compromise at the five point five or the six percent. It seems like the rest of the board is leaning toward five point five. I also want to just say that we will have, I think the next time this comes around in the next five years, we will have a tremendous advantage in terms of the data and we will have the opportunity to reassess this and we will. So the first time we passed this exemption, you know, going on five years ago, we had very little data to analyze. This time we've done a very thorough analysis and then then over the next five years, I think we'll be able to watch this very closely. And if necessary, I'd make some adjustments again. So that's where I stand.
And I'm maybe much in the same place as you, Heather, I but I'm, I do think that it's a very reasonable thing to take off, you know, I mean, it's all projections. Five and a half is as reasonable as seven. It gives me a little bit of pause. Our most recent experience is six percent growth in the cost. At the same time, you know, the span, the 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 risk that we get this wrong is ultimately not very great. And so I'm very comfortable making a reasonable rejection based on the thinking that we've got. And so and I think we have a majority position. So I suggest that we take a vote and agree to carry forward to the meeting in December an exemption that would, I guess, we're not gonna vote this is discussion, but what we, but we have a consensus that we're gonna go back to Georgia State and ask them to calculate the exemption amount that correlates with the five point five percent growth and exemption assumption. That number, the resulting number, is going to be the proposed exemption that we voted on at the December meeting with the rest of the structure, just as Hans described to us. Are we all good with that?
Excellent. So can I, so can I clarify? I sent you all a draft email last night. I heard back from two of you. So I will update that email and instead of asking them to calculate at four, five and a half and seven, I will only ask them to calculate it at five and a half, given the conversation we just had.
Yes.
And and unless I hear an objection, I'll go ahead and get that sent off sometime tonight after a meeting so we can get that analysis moving forward.
Please do. And please thank the the researchers at Georgia State for us. They've been very tolerant and helpful and responsive. And so thank, 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 please thank them for.
They're a good crew.
And. Then also press them to make it as fast as possible.
Yeah, exactly. Well, that'll help now, you know, that we're down to one percentage rate, so.
And I've I've said it before, but I want to say it again, you know, the the members of this committee, whom I'm hoping that that Paul is gonna name for us in just a second. I apologize to put Paul on the spot, but but these guys, Hans and the rest of the committee members have invested a substantial amount of their time and effort and, you know, energy and to coming up with this proposal, which is, I think, terrific. I I really like the structure. I like it that it protects the most vulnerable seniors in that lower age group while saving a substantial benefit for the seniors above seventy. I'm really, I'm really, really proud of the result. And I want to thank you and I just hope that everybody in the our our participants, our two hundred watchers can and can can, if they see you on the street, thank you for all your work on the behalf, on behalf of the school system and the seniors and and so that's just a big thank you to all of you whom I'm hoping we can now name.
Yes. In addition to obviously Hans and I, we have Phil Cuffey, Bill Floyd, Gwen Hall, Sheila Peyton, Maria Pinkleton, Meg Robinson and Elizabeth Wilson.
Terrific. So thank, thank you all. And I think that I think that takes care of that discussion and and it's now under our next agenda item, which is an update on reopening plans, unless there's anything else for me to the committee or the board.
All right. Excellent. I'll go ahead and jump into, we have an update on the COVID nineteen Stakeholder Planning Committee. And so I just want to share some things about that and some other general information about our our planning process and where we are with things, because I know there's some questions about that. So our Stakeholder Planning Committee, which hopefully folks have been able to follow a little bit of, but I know there's a lot to to follow in our various communications, but we have somewhere around, I think it's sixty to seventy people from the community have volunteered, many of them very much experts in their fields of epidemiology and infectious diseases and medicine and all kinds of other areas. So they have stepped up and have been working very hard. We've had two meetings so far as a whole committee and then many subcommittees have been working as well. And so they have just really been doing an amazing job. The information that I'm going to share right now, a lot of it is right off the committee's webpage. So if people go to csdecatur.net slash cs PC, you can get the same information I have there. We're doing our best to post everything that comes out of the committee there so people can keep track of what's happening. And so I'm gonna talk a little bit about how the committee is structured and what the timeline looks like for what the work is we're we're trying to do here. So if you have not kept up with it, you should probably start by looking at the structure and work plan document, which is right at the top of that page I talked about, which will give you a lot more details about what's happening and who's doing what. If you want to see the kind of an update on where any given subcommittee is, we're asking them to keep minutes of their meetings. And many subcommittees are meeting in addition to the two meetings we've had. They've had other meetings, so you can find their minutes there. So you can get a feel for what it is they're discussing. But just a quick overview, we've got a communication subcommittee that is much like communication staff kind of has their toe in a lot of different areas. And so at our last committee meeting, for instance, the communication subcommittee split up and went to all the other subcommittee meetings to try to figure out kind of what are the things that need assistance communicating? How can they help? Things like that, generate ideas and whatnot. We have three focus committees, one on employee focus, one on student focus and one on parent focus. And their goal is to really look at all of these issues from the perspective of that group, employees, parents or students, so that as we're looking at recommendations overall, we also can make sure to keep those lenses in mind. And so they're doing some good work on that. We have a metrics subcommittee, which is looking at whether or not it would be appropriate for us to use metrics to make decisions. And if so, what what we should be looking at? What metric should we use? What values of those metrics should we be looking for, et cetera? And so they are working through that. We have a mitigation subcommittee that is looking at both the work that we're already doing on mitigations and also hopefully making recommendations if there's areas where we need to strengthen what we're doing or make some changes. And so they're looking at mitigations in general. And then we have a virus testing subcommittee that is looking at, would it be beneficial to try to do large scale virus testing? If so, what would that look like? How could we feasibly do it? Things like that. So just basically the role of virus testing in our planning. And so we have all those committees are working, doing a great job. We hope to have some initial recommendations this Friday. We have a draft report. And so hopefully we'll get, I know some of the committees are getting to the point of having some draft recommendations. And so we will be putting those into the report form. But the final report we have, we're aiming for November twentieth to have a final report of the committee done. And that final port report is intended to be recommendations from the committee as a whole, but based on the work of the subcommittees of recommendations for either the administrative team or the board of things that we should be looking at as we plan out our next phases. And so November twentieth is kind of the conclusion of the work of this committee. And one concern I've heard in the community, and I want to clarify, is if we don't have the report till November twentieth and then we have to make plans based off the recommendations, doesn't that get awfully late? And that is a great concern to be sharing and I understand it. And it's important to understand that the work of the administrative team is being done concurrently with the work of this committee. And so we are able to do a lot of things as we we have representatives from the Wilson Center on every team, so we can make sure we know what it is they're discussing, what direction they're going with things, so that as we are working on our plans, we know what the committees are working on as well. So we can feel that we can make sure that we're moving forward in kind of a parallel fashion. So that when the recommendations come out in a final form on November twentieth, there shouldn't be any surprises to the administrative team at that point. And so we should be able to fairly quickly come up with what our updated plans look like. So our goal for those updated plans, we want to share them as soon as possible after November twentieth. Obviously, that next week is our Thanksgiving week. We will share them as soon as possible after that, as early as possible before holiday break. And we'll try to hit that Goldilocks spot in between those two and get that information out there, because we know people really want to know a lot of information. And so in addition to the work of this committee, I think it's important to understand there's a lot of other things happening. So our work with teachers on the accommodations process continues. Several Wilson Center administrators have met with every single teacher that requested accommodations to try to figure out what exactly is it you need? How can we meet what you need? And try to get to the point of finding an answer to the accommodation request and that is going along really well. We are also going to be putting out a posting for about ten to fifteen additional teachers because we now know that we do have some teachers who have very serious medical concerns that are going to require them to be teaching virtually. And we are going to see if we are able to hire some additional teachers so they can help us either backfill those locations or be an extra resource maybe in the classroom when the teacher can't be in the classroom, things like that. And so we are working on that. So those postings will be going up soon. And that should help us considerably be able to move forward with whatever our plans are in the future. We do have a team of teachers and administrators are working on instructional plans. And so I did get a question about why isn't there an instructional subcommittee? Well, that's why, because instruction is what we do, right? The the purpose of the planning committee is getting some some help with and expertise in areas that are not what we do. And so that's why there's not an instructional team or subcommittee in the planning committee. So we do have that team going. It's going very much like it went in the summer when we did all the planning with our virtual Vanguard team to figure out how to make virtual learning as effective as possible. That team is and and other, it's not the exact same team, but some of many of the same members are working right now on those things. We also have school and district COVID response teams that are working on the plans. And we are working on gathering those so we can post them so people can see the school specific things as well. Because there's a lot of questions, people will look at like our our manual, for instance, of like, here are the mitigations that have to take place, things like that. And so we are working to try to get those in a format that we can post and share. So if anyone wants to know what's happening at a specific school where there is some leeway with how the school figures out what to do, they'll be able to see exactly like, how is this school handling pickup and drop off procedures? How is this school handling lunch? How is this school handling passing time? You know, those kind of things. And so we are working to get those in a in a format and location that they're easily accessible. So that should hopefully help answer quite a few questions. And then we are also looking at updating, you remember, we put out the learning choice survey where we ask parents to log in and and select, do you want your child to be in virtual learning or an in person learn? We got great feedback from folks that the they're interested in being able to have a little more detail in their response. Because we heard from folks who said, for instance, well, I'd like my kid to be in person, but if you don't have room for them because of social distancing, I can keep them home, but I don't, I'd, my preference would be in person. So right now we're leaning to towards updating that with four options. So people could express, I want my kid in person, period. Or I want my kid in person, but if you need us to keep them virtual, we can. Or I want my kid virtual, but if you need them in person, we can. Or I want my kid in virtual, period. And so that's where we're leaning right now. We haven't formally finalized that yet, but that will allow families to give us a little bit more nuance in their response so that as the schools are planning out, if you, for instance, have room for ten students in a classroom and you have eleven students who say they want to come back and several of those selected that they want to come back, but they don't have to, now they know they can reach out to those families and say, hey, can one of you volunteer to stay home for this period so that we can, you know, move forward with our opening, for example? So we're looking at that as an option. We're looking at other things as well. We have a meeting set up with the ABC Science Collaborative. They are looking to expand. If you search them on the internet, you can find them pretty easily. They're looking to expand their outreach to assist districts with expertise outside of, I think it's North Carolina where they started, if I remember correctly. And they had reached out to Emory and tried to make some connections there. The idea of ABC Science Collaborative is to put schools in touch with experts. And so we're not sure it's really something we need necessarily, but we're gonna check it out and see if it is something that would be valuable. So I think we have a meeting set up, maybe tomorrow night, I think. Just to talk through with the ABC Science Collaborative folks and the professor at the at Emory, that would be our contact through that group. So who already is on our committee. And so it was a great connection that, you know, we already have a lot of expertise in turn. And so it was a great connection that, you know, we already have a lot of expertise internally, so we're not positive this is necessary. But it's worth looking into, there are a lot of good resources out there and we want to explore what's available. So I will know more about that after tomorrow night. I also want to share, we are trying to get set up, excuse me, some weekly town halls. We've come up with a, we have a new tool that we think can really help us do town halls in a much more effective way. And be much more responsive in the moment to folks. And so we are figuring out the logistics of what it'll look like. But in general, I'm looking to host a weekly town hall, maybe one hour on, on maybe the same weeknight each week or something like that. Where folks have a chance to ask questions that either, hey, I saw this discussion on Facebook and I really want to know the facts. Or, hey, this is something we're talking about around the dinner table and it's really worrying us or whatever it is like. So that we can try to provide answers to people. So we're gonna get those up and going as soon as possible. And we will also be informing people about this new tool we have where they can basically put out their questions out there. And people can upvote those questions that they think, hey, that really aligns with what I want to know as well. And that way we can really focus our time on those questions that are most important to the community. And then if we, if we can't get to them all, we'll get to them at the next one. So we're looking at that right now to figure out what that looks like. And I'm pretty excited about that because I do think it's really difficult to keep up with all the different things that are happening, all the different communications. I get emails all the time from random things like, wow, why didn't I know that this was happening? Well, you're as overwhelmed as we are, I'm sure, with all the different communications that are coming out. And so it's understandable that these things, you don't necessarily see everything that's going. The other thing is that, you know, because we have our planning committee working right now, we don't have some of the answers that people want. Because we want the committee to do that work and help us make those recommendations. And so if we are able to get a town hall going before November twentieth, which I hope we do get one or two of them in. We may have answers like, we don't have that answer right now, and here's why. Because we have this committee working on that particular piece or things like that. So I do think it's important for people to understand that that is ongoing and it's something we are working on right now. I do want to just give a quick update, I was gonna do it in superintendent comments, but I might as well do it now because it's related. I just wanted to update you on the pods that we have up and running. So we currently have ten pods that are up and running and four locations, at the high school, the middle school, Fave and ECLC. And those pods, with those ten pods, we're serving a hundred students. We consistently have about seven students, seventy students coming every day, so it's not quite a perfect attendance. But over the next week and a half, we have additional pods coming online. We're gonna have pods coming online at Tally and Winona Park and Westchester and Glenwood and Claremont and Oakhurst. And at Tally and Winona, those will have actually two pods coming online and all those others will have one pod. We have hired thirty-eight facilitators to assist with those pods. And we have additional facilitators coming on every day, those are not all full-time positions. Some of those are part-time positions depending on the needs of the coverage. But that's pretty, it's, it's pretty awesome. We had a feeling that if we put the call out, we'd be able to find people, and we did. So the pods are up and going and are going pretty well and are expanding very soon. So that's the gist of the, the COVID update of the planning committee and kind of where we are with all those things. Are there any specific questions that I can answer?
I had a question, sorry, Tashi, go ahead.
David, I just thank you for that, that report, that was, that was great. And I'm looking forward to, you know, kind of seeing what the committee starts to come back with. In reference to the pods, what is the, the best way for parents to, you know, inform if they would like their children to be part of the pod?
So there is a whole signup process for getting on the pods. Let me look it up real quick because I just saw it. If you go to our homepage, csdecater.net and scroll down, the very top news item is district learning pod information. And if they go there, they can find this, the spot to sign up and, and put their name on.
And are you seeing that most needs are being met or is there?
The, the demand is higher, yeah, the demand is higher than our capability right now. That's one of the reasons we're onboarding so many people, but hopefully we will be able to continue to adjust to it.
Awesome, thank you.
First, I want to thank the committee members for volunteering their time. I know they are under tight time constraints. And so thank you all for, for helping us to figure this, this thing out. I, I wanted to ask a question about teacher accommodations, David. Teachers only get accommodations for if they have health issues. They don't get the accommodations if there's someone in their house who is medically compromised.
Let me tell you off the top of my head what I know and I can get details to you, but that, I do believe that's correct. I think the accommodation is about the individual themselves and what are their health specific needs. Now that being said, we are trying to work with people if there are other needs beyond that, right? So if they have, for instance, you are taking care of a medically fragile person. And you need to try, we will try to work with you to figure out another solution if you can't teach in person. But the formal accommodation process itself, which is governed by things like the, the federal rules on accommodations and what goes along with the coronavirus relief act, if I have that right. Those, it does have to be you specifically who's, who's needing the accommodation because of your medical needs.
Okay, and then I'd be interested to know what your thoughts are about the ABC science? Because I know there has been some controversy about a study and, and their findings in terms of how younger children spread the virus. And so, so I'd be interested to know.
I will be interested, I've heard some of that as well ever since I announced that we were gonna check in and just see what it's about. I do know the leadership team, it comes out of the Duke Medical School, I believe, or at least Duke University. And it is full of, and you can go to their website and see, there are a lot of experts helping lead it. But I have heard that there are concerns that they may have a particular bent to their recommendations. And so that's definitely something we'll want to be looking for as we talk to them tomorrow night.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions?
First, you know, I, I also want to echo the thanks to the COVID stakeholder planning committee. I encourage the community to, to monitor that website. CSDcater.net slash CSPC. I read through it and it gives me more confidence that there's progress being made toward face-to-face learning. And I think, you know, all the board members, including myself, have, have heard from literally hundreds of community members who are really wanting some concrete dates and assurance that we are going to be able to get our kids back face-to-face. You know, we know that we've probably exceeded expectations with the virtual learning. However, we all know that it's not, it's not anywhere near where in-person learning is. And we, you know, there is a gap there and it's, it's disproportionately affecting a lot of students. Particularly, you know, I feel like we're taking steps back with all the equity work that we're doing. So I, I applaud the efforts to get our students back face-to-face. Dr. Duty, I think your suggestion with the town hall is critical at this point because I'm sure that it feels rather unfulfilling for people who tuned into this meeting to hear that we have a lot of committees and a lot of work being done. Because they want answers. And so I think that if we are able to start giving some answers in some direction to the community regarding which way we are leaning. It can help community members plan. A lot of community members have indicated that they really need to make decisions regarding their, their students. Because especially those that are not successful in this environment, and so I empathize with that. So I really encourage as much transparency and lead time in sharing our direction. I realize that we can't bring the students back unless we bring the teachers back. So I also want to thank the teacher advisory council and your work with them. And all the work that your staff is doing to work through these accommodation requests. I do think that we can find a way to safely do this, and I'm very excited to see the plan. I feel that we need to give our teachers as much lead time as possible. That we expect them to return and when we expect them to return. If there are no students in the buildings, I feel that it's reasonable to expect our teachers to be back at work in the buildings. Because I feel like that is the first step to getting our students back. If we can get our teachers in the buildings safely, we will have worked through a lot of logistics to get to that point. And then I feel like our teachers will be in their classrooms also helping us wrap our heads around how we're going to bring our students back in the classroom. So I encourage transparency there and as much lead time as possible to set expectations with our teachers so that we have our teachers on board. I know that is something they've requested from us. And the more lead time we can give them, I think the, the easier it will be for them to also plan their, their lives and logistics around going back. Obviously, this has been a changing environment for all of us. I understand that it's a challenging environment for all of us. But I applaud all the efforts to bring our students back face-to-face safely.
Thank you, and those are all good points and things that are topics of our discussion, so.
David, we had a call earlier in the week, I'm gonna ask you, because I think we're gonna get a lot of public comments, you're gonna ask this. I want to hear your, your response to it before we get to it. Are we gonna open up on January fifth? What's the decision tree to come to that? Are we gonna give choice to parents? Are we gonna give choice to teachers and how are we gonna come to that? And if it's, we're waiting on the plan from this committee and we're gonna use that to inform that, just kind of walk me through that for it. Because that's the number one question that I'm getting.
Yep, yep, no, it's a very natural question. So one thing, the committee is, it is very important to hear what the recommendations are from the committee. They are really examining these issues from all possible sides and having incredibly robust discussions. And bringing their expertise to it, and so I'm really looking forward to their recommendations. And so the, in terms of the question of, are we going to be back in classrooms in January? I can't answer that yet, because we really do need the feedback from that committee to have that formal answer. Because for instance, one of the things we've charged them with is looking at metrics. And if the metrics subcommittee comes up with recommendations and that we feel are appropriate. Then the metrics would be driving the decision of when we come back, right? And so that's part of what we need to know is what these recommendations are gonna look like. I will share that there are definitely, just like in the community, there are different opinions on the committees as well. And I have shared with the committees that if, while it would be great if a subcommittee is able to come to consensus on a recommendation. It is okay if they can't. What I would prefer to have is like, here's the majority opinion and the minority opinion, and here's why they feel the way they feel. So that we have more information to work with in making our final decision. So I want to emphasize that as well, that the committees are not being pushed to say, you have to come up with one answer. Because this is just far too complicated for some of their discussions and some of the areas they're in to be able to do that. And so what I've asked them for is the why of why they're recommending what they are, even if they're different. So that will help drive what we know in terms of timeline. What we know is that we have shared that we are not planning to bring students back anytime before January fifth. And so that is kind of the earliest date, depending on the work of the subcommittee. And it may get pushed later, I don't know at this point. So in terms of decision tree, we need to get this information from the subcommittee. But like I said, we are also on the subcommittees listening to them. So we can be doing that work simultaneously, because like to Heather's point, the more we can give people a heads up, the earlier we can give them a heads up, the better. And so we are doing that work simultaneously to it as well. And then once we have that, we'll be able to have our recommendations of, of what we are saying as an administrative team is the plan moving forward at that point. So hopefully incredibly, as quickly as we possibly can, after Thanksgiving break is when we will have more specifics. If there are things that we can come up with before that. So for instance, if a subcommittee is able to quickly come to consensus on a recommendation and we know that's gonna be their recommendation, and we can start doing some really firm work around that, we'll go ahead and do that, right? So there may be some information that we're able to share in advance of November twentieth. But I don't want to artificially set expectations that that would be available across the, across the board. So that's kind of what that looks like.
Is the goal to give, and then you spoke about it earlier, they'll come up with a metric, is the goal then? Based on the email you sent to that committee, it seems like there's gonna be, parents are gonna be given another choice or another discussion of choice, is that correct?
Okay, so the, in, in terms of the choice, we plan to do like what I had shared earlier about the four different learning choices. We plan to do that regardless, getting that information from parents. So that whatever it looks like for when we're able to open, we have a better feel for the nuance of what parents are looking for for their children.
Okay, and go over those four here, so I kind of have them written down.
I know that, yeah, no problem. So the way we're leaning is that we, we'd have, we'd have parents, let us know when we come back in person. Are you absolutely adamant your kid comes back? Or are you, you're wanting your kid to come back in person, but you could keep them home if we needed you to? Like for instance, if we had to limit class sizes. Or are you really wanting them virtual, but you could send them if we had extra room? Or are you adamant that they need to stay virtual? That way we have a little more nuance of what the parents' preferences are as we do our planning.
Okay, thank you. And then is there a built-in choice for teachers into that or will we stick?
Oh, right, right, right. Yeah, so good question. So we're doing our best to meet all of the accommodation requests from teachers as best we can. The, one of the reasons we're seeking to hire some additional teachers is so we do have more flexibility. So that if we do feel, hey, like with what Jana was explaining, like in this situation, we really don't want to have to push this person to make a decision between doing this or quitting or something like that. We want to be able to have a little more flexibility. And in a district our size, that's really difficult to do. And so that's why we are planning to try to bring on some temporary teachers, at least through the end of the school year, to accommodate that, those requests a little easier.
Okay, okay. And then I, then I assume it's, and sorry, I think that I'm wrapping up. And then it's just a question of balancing it, which I do appreciate, I know many of our parents and myself included. I got a six-year-old here myself, want an answer, a timely answer, but it is about balancing the teacher choice with total parent choice and the, the total number of classrooms. Is there any issue about kind of reformulating the classrooms going into the new year to accommodate teachers and parents?
Yeah, good question.
Is that part of the teacher committee?
Right, and so part of, I, I imagine we are going to get some recommendations about this from the subcommittees. But I'll share with you like part of the decision point, for instance, is, I use the example of, at a given school, if you have three teachers of the same grade level. And two of them are okay teaching in person and one of them needs to teach virtually. One potential solution is you take all the virtual kids and put them with the virtual teacher and then you reshuffle the classes. Now, there are pros and cons of every single approach, right? And so, is reshuffling classes a good option or not a good option? So that's the kind of thing where we're hoping these subcommittees will give us some of their perspective, either as parents, as employees or as students of the pros and cons of the different aspects, so we know kind of what's on the table.
Okay, and, and I'm sorry, I'll be done. So we're waiting on a metric from the committee, and that's the reason when they say January fifth, and I'm with you. We don't really know the answer to that, you know, we're, it's a two-week trailing thing, we're looking for an answer. You've, you've done a great job of recruiting science, I want to, everyone else did it, so I feel obligated to do so. I want to thank the committee, particularly the few members of the scientific committee who have come together and put their names out there. For, but by Thanksgiving break said, this is the number, the, this is what we're looking for. And then from that, begin to give parents a choice, A, B, C, D, where do you fall? A number of parents have also emailed us and, and I want to thank them who have said, listen, I would prefer home, but I do understand that if it makes the community better in terms of balancing equity and a teacher choice, I am willing to say that they could go home or they go virtual, that's beautiful, I love those. And then teachers also get a choice, that's part of it, and then it's about balancing and coming up with a plan for January fifth, which is the first possible, assuming that metric does it.
Yeah, and the one thing I would, the one thing I would clarify is the metric subcommittee, the first question for them is, should we be using a metric? If so, then what values of that metric will inform our decision-making? So just, just to clarify, they may come. So just, just to clarify, they may come back and say, no, we don't think a metric's appropriate, and here's why. But I don't, I'm not positive on that.
Okay. That's fair. I look forward to hearing what they have to say. Will there, and then their findings, that'll be shared on that website? Will it be blasted out to the community?
Yeah, so the, the plan is to pull all of this together, because then what will happen is, once we get the subcommittee recommendations, we need to put them all together as one final report of the whole committee. And so there may be times where some of the subcommittee recommendations may conflict. And so we're gonna have to go through a process of trying to work as a whole committee of figuring out. So what is the recommendation from the committee then? There is a conflict there. So and once we get that all done, we'll have our final report. And that final report, of course, will be posted so everyone can see what the, the final output is from the committee.
Okay, I'll be quiet now.
Okay. Good questions.
For my, I don't have as many questions as I do comments, and I'm not quite sure how to structure them. I'll begin by saying what I said before, which is, I so much appreciate the work that you and your staff have invested in this. And this is a monumental task for which none of us were prepared or necessarily well suited to pull off. I mean, no, you guys are administrators. We do whatever we do. This is a challenge unlike any that we expected or really set up to meet. Given that, I think what I want to do in part is sort of give, not voice, because I can't do it, but adequately. But I can imagine being intensely frustrated with the presentation tonight. And thinking that this is, you know, it's just a lot of committees, it's a lot of talk. You know, my kid is flailing at home and needs to get back to school. We need a plan and we need a decision. We don't need a thousand committees that are just gonna talk and talk and talk and talk. And and I want to number one say that, you know, I hear that and I agree with it. I also understand what you are trying to do, which is essential to getting us back, which is that I see it as absolutely imperative that we get back to school. I don't think the current plan is working. And I've shared this, you know, before, you know, it works for some, it doesn't work for many. And we're leaving quite a number behind. And I just think that we have, it is our charge as a public school system to get back in the classroom. That said, it is also imperative that we do it in a way that we keep our staff safe. We are a great school system because we have great teachers. And we will not be a great school system if we don't both protect them and keep them safe, but also bring them along. And so for this to work, we have to have an absolute imperative that we get back coupled with an absolute imperative to do it in a way that, that keeps our teachers and staff safe and that brings them into the process. I think that one reason for the, you know, what I think to my eyes was maybe an unsatisfying report is that it comes prior to getting, you know, the draft from the committee. And so it's very hard to provide very clear direction, like people deserve a need. Nonetheless, we can't get in front of the people that we have asked to make these recommendations. I think that this would be intensely frustrating, but I understand it. The I guess to that end, I'm very happy with your plan to do a weekly town hall. I think more communication, more frequently, and more opportunity for people to get their questions answered is going to be a good thing. I said this before, and I'll say it again, that every time I have asked a question, and we have asked, we've all asked quite a number. It has been very clear to me that you are, have not only been thinking about that question, but that you're balancing it in an appropriate way with the right considerations in mind. And so I appreciate that. But I don't know that, that anybody else who's on the parent side of this has access to that and can really see how you're balancing these things. And I think the weekly town hall is going to be a good you know, solution to that. I want to make, make it clear, I mean, though, you know, you start thinking about, you know, like fireside chats, like we're all gonna hunker down for this long winter and have fireside chats instead of getting back to school. And, and I want to make clear that that's not it. And I, and I would like to see a sense of urgency that, I mean, if we said that the earliest that the kids can come back, January 5, it's my sense. And, and I'll, I'll say again, you know, we're the board, we do not have, and it is not appropriate. And it would be a disaster for us to try to make these calls. And so there's too much to balance, too much to think about for the board specifically to say, you need to do it this way, you need to do it that way. I do think that we can provide our sense that we need to get back. We need to get this solved, and we need to do it quickly. And we said that we can't get back before January 5. I thought that that was the right call when you made it, although it pained me at the time. But I thought it was the right call. But I want to be in a position so that come January 5, you know, we have absolutely had time to hammer, and we have a good plan. I mean, the, the protocol for being in school and doing it safely is very robust. And at this point, it's even more robust than it was before, because we took a good plan, put it through your committee process, and it's only gonna get stronger and stronger. And if you compare this to what schools around the country are doing, I think that I stacked up very favorably with the most protective of them. And I think there's a growing body of evidence that we can do school safely. And that the schools that have come back are not, they're not the super spreaders. They're not, they're not the cause of spreading the virus. They do have incidents, but they don't tend to be the source. You know, if you've got a case, you've got an individual case. It's been rare that you have clusters within schools. That's been especially where, as I understand it, within schools that have protective measures like we have designed. And so again, we need to get back. We've got to keep our people safe. I believe that we can do both. And I believe there's a growing body of evidence that we can do it. And, you know, I'm not the one to make that call. But I do want to make sure that when it's time for the call, that we're ready to go. And so, you know, back to the staff question, it does seem to me that if we said the earliest students can come back is January 5, let's have everything in place that if that's the right decision on January 5, that students are back on January 5. And not, you know, not sometime after that, so that we can do the kinds of adjustments that could have been done when the students were not in the building. Again, you've got, you've got issues to sort out with your staff. And so that's not an instruction, but that is a, that is a call it a recommendation that we just need to be ready to go, that we've, we've had, we've had the time to plan, and I just think it's time to get back in school. So I'm, I'm done. And I appreciate your listening. I am excited about the ABC Science Collaborative and appreciate that you set that meeting up.
Yeah. And just to further the point, like, I do feel very strongly that we will absolutely be ready to go. And so along with, I should have mentioned, and I can't remember if I did, so let me just mention it just, and it may be again. When we come out with whatever our next plan is following the report from the committee, that will also include details about our instructional plan, because I know that is something people really want to know. And they want to know it before they have to make their learning choice. There are a lot of concerns in the community about how can I choose in person or virtual if I don't know what it's gonna look like? If I don't know if virtual is gonna be different once we go in person than it is now, for instance. And those are, those are very valid concerns, and we, we understand them, and we will make sure that we have as much detail as we possibly can for folks when they have to make that call about what they're doing. So the other thing I would mention is it's important to remember, our teachers are still working, right? And so it's not like we can just say, hey, teachers, in addition to all the virtual learning and everything you're doing, you also need to be preparing for this new reality of in person. So part of whatever plan we have, we'll have to include that time for teachers to prepare, to get their classrooms set up, to get their planning set up, depending on what the exact learning instructional model looks like, et cetera. So I just want to make sure that that's clear as well. That there are pieces that are gonna have to happen in order to make it successful. We can't just flip a switch and immediately say, all right, you were virtual, now teachers, you're gonna go in person the next day. There is some, some overlap there. It's not super significant, but it is something I don't want to gloss over and make people think there isn't a transition there. So, but yeah, I, I feel very confident that we will have robust plans in place. And a lot of them are ready. You've seen like our COVID manual, for instance, a lot of that stuff is already out there. And as you said, it's just getting stronger as we move through the process.
Thank you. I, I do want to reemphasize, I'm sorry, Jana, I just wanted to reemphasize that I meant no criticism. I'm very, very appreciative of the efforts of you and your staff. And I don't know that it is easy for folks to comprehend how much is going on and how hard you all are working to take all of these different considerations into account. I just think that we also need to appreciate how little of that is, gets through.
Yep.
And how intensely and justifiably frustrated many in our community are.
Absolutely.
Jana?
And I just wanted to add that I don't want to diminish the work of the committees. I think that they're doing more than just talking. I think that it's necessary. The committees and having our experts are necessary steps to making sure that we do this safely whenever it's, the time is appropriate, because today the White House declared Georgia a red, in the red zone again. We have more cases than we've had ever. And so we just have to make sure that we are doing everything we can because folks are dying. And it, we are all suffering. We are all suffering. And I, and I just need to, when I go to sleep at night, need to make sure that we've done all that we can whenever we return.
And you made me think of one more thing, Jana, is I do think it's important to keep in mind, too, we know that President-elect Biden has announced that he's forming a COVID task force. It is quite possible that that task force is going to come out with recommendations that we then need to take into consideration even after we've done all of our planning. And so we can't wait for that. We need to keep moving forward and doing our planning. And part of what has been really uncomfortable is our need for we plan, and then we have to change it, and then we plan, and then we have to change it. And that's the nature of the environment we're in. And so I do think we need to be prepared that it is quite possible there will be some federal recommendations, and maybe not even recommendations, maybe requirements that we will have to take into consideration. And we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. But that is something that's on my mind. I am a little bit worried that as, as nice as it would be to have that guidance that we've been wanting all along, at some point, it may be, when it comes, if it, if it comes too late, that could present its own challenge as well. So I just want to share that, that I would anticipate some, some flexibility we'll need to have in that regard.
Hey, David, I just wanted to clarify something as we were talking back and forth between the four choices that you're giving parents so that we can really gauge, gauge the nuance there. It's not going to be that type of setup with the teachers. So it's not necessarily a teacher choice in that regards, but it's more of, okay, if there's accommodation that that they are requesting, then we're gonna try our best to make that request. But it's not like they, you're throwing out there, hey, teachers, do you want to be virtual, or do you want to be in person, correct?
Right. Good, good question. So first of all, I don't know what the employee focus subcommittee is gonna recommend, so they may recommend something different. But at this point, we are planning to continue with the accommodation process, which is not a, which do you want? It is a, the default is you teach in your classroom. And if you need an accommodation, let's work with you to try to figure out what we can do. So that is a great clarification. I appreciate you bringing that up.
Thank you.
I just had a couple of additional comments, and I want to reiterate that I appreciate the collaborative effort with our teachers, because I do very much appreciate our teachers. You know, I understand there is fear, and I understand that there is anger in the community. And I think we have to balance that with the need to get students back. What I don't want is, you know, I, I'm not saying, and no one is saying that we're going to, to go back 100% and it's, you know, this way or the highway. I think we're doing everything we can as a school system to work with our teachers to bring them along and not force them to do this. And so I think that's huge emphasis of the Teacher Advisory Council, and it's important. And so I want teachers to know that, that, that you know, I as a board member support them very much. And I also want to share that there are many teachers who have reached out to their classes who are eager to go back. So it's not, it's not the assumption that all teachers don't want to go back is not correct. You know, there are some who legitimately have have fear and issues that we are working with them to resolve as best we can. But there are also teachers who are very excited to go back. And I applaud some of the efforts that I've seen personally in my, my children's classrooms with teachers who have been very creative and innovative with plans to go back safely. And so I just really applaud our teachers for that. They're doing, they're doing a tremendous job at what they're doing now, as well as also thinking forward to when we go back to face to face. And so I thank them for their, their forward thinking and their creativity there. I, I do want to bring up Wellness Wednesdays. I've received a lot of input from the community that people are concerned that, that that is a day off, and it's not a needed learning day. I do also appreciate that our teachers are doing a lot of extra work because of this virtual, and especially when, when we bring them back and they're going to be teaching in person and virtually. But I think we need to look at Wellness Wednesdays, and particularly for the high school students who are, who are, you know, their curriculum is not flexible. I know, not that anyone's is disposable either, but particularly for IB and AP classes, I'm hearing from parents who are saying that their kids are just not getting through the material. And they're having a difficult time with that, and they're worried for their kids to be able to pass these classes, and for them to also pass these, these tests for these classes to get AP credit, or to also pass the IB exams. And so I think we need to relook at, you know, and I know it's being done, but I just want to share that the, the community is sharing concerns about Wellness Wednesdays and that we may adjust how we go forward. I understand why we, we have needed them and how we've used them, but we've also evolved. I think we've gotten more efficient with our virtual learning. I think we've gotten more comfortable with it. I think this is an evolutionary process. And so I think that the Wellness Wednesdays can also be part of that, that evolution, and we hopefully can reconsider and consider to consider how that Wellness Wednesdays should be used. And perhaps particularly for middle school and high school, make it more academic in some way. I'm not saying it all has to be synchronous, but somehow make it a more meaningful day academically. The other comment I want to mention is just the metric, and I know this is the, the committee's work. But there are school systems who are back and who are doing it well. For example, Marietta City Schools, who don't have a metric. My concern with a metric is just that it's the assumptions about the metric may be that there are little to no PPE. And that with, with all of the do care and planning that the City Schools of Decatur is taking for how to bring teachers and students back safely with many layers of PPE above and beyond what other school systems are doing. And we haven't seen the extent of it yet. We've seen, we've seen a previous report, and I know it's only being improved. My hope is that we can have more of a controlled environment in our schools so that we are less dependent on a fixed number out in the community regarding community spread. Obviously, it's more of a concern when the community spread is high. But I think the more layers of PPE and protections that we have for students and teachers, the more flexibility we can have, depending on what those numbers are.
And just a couple of clarifications. One, that's exactly what I asked the metrics committee to take into account. If there's, if they are gonna set a number, make sure you know what the mitigations committee is talking about. Because if, in my mind, it would make a difference what mitigations you're doing. If you're gonna set a number, it would have to take that into account. So that is something they're aware of and looking at. The Wellness Wednesdays are also something the committee is looking at, trying to figure out how do we balance our teachers' need for a different amount of prep time, because this is very different from typical learning and making sure they have the time they need to make it as successful as possible. But also recognizing that there are a lot of folks who do feel like we are losing one of our five days a week and that we need to recoup some of that time. um, and that we need to recoup some of that time. So that is also, I would anticipate some recommendations coming out of the committee regarding that as well. I I glad you mentioned how we are trying to work with teachers um, to come to solutions on like accommodations requests and things. And um, I I think most teachers appreciate that that is not what most districts do. It is very common in school districts, especially the bigger ones, um, to that they have very formal processes and um, they may have an accommodation process. And if you don't qualify, that's the end of the road, right? Um, and so I appreciate you mentioning that because we are going above and beyond to try to accommodate our teachers as much as possible while not completely hamstringing the organization because we just can't function without teachers, right? And so we are trying to make that balance, but I'm glad you mentioned that. You had mentioned something about the, you know, like the teachers who are wanting to come back, and that's very true. And I just want to share something I think sometimes people don't realize is, for instance, we have teachers who have um, put in proposals to say, hey, I want to bring my kids back for, you know, an hour a week so I can see them in person, right? Um, and I will tell you that the day after, I think it was the day after I mentioned about the um, proposal process. Um, I received a threat from a parent that they would sue us if we had some teachers offering things that other teachers weren't. And so the fact of the matter is, unfortunately, um, we we also, at the same time as planning all of these things and trying to be creative and coming up with solutions, we also have to keep in mind that what works at one school may not work at another school. And if that involves different protected students, um, we may not be able to do anything in certain instances. And it's it's a sad state of affairs, unfortunately, um, but it is where we are. And so we have to figure out if we come up with solutions, we have to make sure we can apply them equally to all the kids across the district that fit a certain characteristic. And so I do share that because I do, I hear from folks that say like, well, I know this teacher had this a great idea and I agree a hundred percent that teacher had a great idea, but unfortunately, we have to get eight more teachers who could support that great idea before we can move it forward. So um, something we're working on, it's not necessarily a a hard barrier, but it is an obstacle to overcome sometimes um, in coming up with our plans. So I think that's important to know as well. I forgot to mention that.
Before we go to comments, I wanted to just echo some of what others have said, particularly in support of staff and really leaning into the accommodations process. And I think that we've made it clear, the board has made it clear from the beginning that um, you know, we don't want the budget to be, w- 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 this is not where we want to be um, nickel and diming our staff. We want to be leaning into providing every reasonable accommodation. And um, you know, if there's a reasonable request and we can meet it, we don't want the budget to be the impediment. Now, as you said, every problem in the end is a money problem. But you know, if it's a big request, you can come to the board and ask about it, but um, y- y- you know, I think the general sense shared amongst us is that, you know, let's spend what it takes to keep our staff safe and let's open, you know, let's let's get get what needs to be done. And and once we're, once we've accommodated what needs to be accommodated, let's, let's get back into school.
Um, I'm chuckling here because I I told the committee um, exactly that of um, I know that the board does not want budget to be the first, the first thing you consider because um, there is a tendency to say, well, that's going to cost money, so we can't do it. Um, and then later on, one of the committee members said, well, I heard you say budget's not an obstacle, like it's not a, I said, that is not what I said. But don't let it be the first obstacle, right? Because if it is something that we can reasonably do within budget, I know the board supports that and I appreciate that. And you've shown it time and again, but um, and I think it's reflective of what our community believes as well. But um, we really do, we don't want money to be the first obstacle if there is a reasonable solution to put in place. For instance, I mean, it is not cheap to hire ten or fifteen more teachers to bring them on board so that we have the resources we need. Um, but it's money well spent to make sure that we can actually have, make the accommodations we need to make and move forward. So um, I'm glad you mentioned that.
Are we, are we ready to move on to public comment?
And when you.
So it's eight thirty. We'll, we'll devote as much time as it takes. Um, if you have not yet signed up using the form, then I guess do it now. Is the forum still open, David?
I believe so. And and Jana is going to run public comment for us today. So if you want to give your normal opening remarks, Louis, and then we can jump in.
All right. Well, the only only opening remark is that the the public comment period, we we allot three minutes per speaker. And uh, it's time to address the board with uh, issues of general interest to the system as a whole. It's not a time to um, to address personal issues or issues with personnel or specific students. Those are better addressed through other channels. If there are any com- comments that might get close to the line, I will ask you to stop. Um, that doesn't mean that I'm cutting you off, but I will ask you to pause so that we can have a discussion and uh, figure out whether it's in bounds or out. I just ask you to bear with me if that occurs. Um, it hasn't in a while, so if it doesn't tonight. Um, and I think that's all I need to say. Um, and so it, so Jana, you're running the comments? What did, what did David just tell us?
I thought I heard him say Jana, but I.
Oh, did I say Jana? I was looking at your picture, Jana, sorry. Shayna is running the comments. I apologize. You're in the top corner right above her on my screen.
Oh, one other.
Well, Jana, if you want to, you know.
From time to time, I'm going to ask Shayna where we are, like how, just so that people can plan and know, you know, so like, how many commenters do we have signed up currently?
Currently twenty-six.
Okay. That's less than last time. But so let's, let's uh, if, when you speak, would you please first let us know your name and your connection with the school system? If you're a parent, let us know where your kids are. If you have some other connection, let us know that, just so that we know who's talking to us. So who's our first speaker?
Our first speaker is Chuck Daniel. And Chuck, if you unmute, you'll be ready to speak.
Hey, Shayna, can you hear me?
Hey, Chuck. Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you for responding to all my emails, or at least most of them. I appreciate it. Um, I I I appreciate this conversation and it's had me move off of my prepared remarks. Um, so I'm a little optimistic from what I'm hearing here, but about going back to to face to face school, or at least having an option for face to face school. But I was optimistic with the plan in July. It seemed like a good plan in July. Um, then it sounded like we had a good plan in September. And 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 now we're we're planning to plan to to make a plan. Um, we're we're seeing all the other schools around us successfully hold some version of face to face classes. This, we're we're not breaking new ground. This is, this is being done successfully now. I I I don't understand the weight, but I'm I'm going to try to stay positive. Um, and and I'm I'm optimistic that we're going to have a face to face. So two things that I I wanted to touch on, I and it was touched on a little bit by the board members, but I don't want to lose the fact that some, we're going to lose some teachers if we don't go back face to face. I've heard some feedback from teachers in the community that this isn't what they signed up for, how they were going to teach. Um, my my sister is a middle school um, teacher in Gwinnett County, and she wasn't going back if they were doing virtual. It, she, she's all about the kids and she knew that the kid, some of those kids were not getting what they needed from virtual. So she wasn't going to continue down that path because she wasn't getting to accomplish what she wanted in teaching. I don't, I don't think that voice is being heard right now in in CSD. So I would, I would look for you to search that out. Um, the the last thing that I'll touch on is uh, you probably don't have visibility to this, but people are moving from Decatur because they don't believe we're ever going to go back to some level of face to face, or at least in the near future. This hit my family very personally this weekend. Neighbors of ours for ten plus years, they have kids the same age as ours, high school students. They they put an offer to a house in Fulton County this weekend just because they don't think we're going to get to a face to face option, at least in the foreseeable future. That's heartbreaking for me. Um, I've lived in Decatur twenty-one years. I've never thought about moving until now because it's for my kids. I, my kids aren't getting with, well, oh, oh, I'm in that. One of my kids is doing great. One of my kids is suffering. I mean, he's struggling. It's, it's terrible. Um, so thank you for the time. Um, I'll, I'll, I'll close it out by I I appreciate all the the committee members' time, but it's time not to, if we're going back January fifth, start planning for going back successfully January fifth and safely. So my time's up. I will, uh, but thank you for the opportunity and uh, hopefully you guys have read some of my emails a lot, but uh, I'll try to tone it back.
We, we read everyone. Thank you, Mr. Daniel.
Our next speaker is Sarah Ferdinand-Green. Ms. Green?
Hi. Um, hi, I wanted to first of all, say that I have also changed what I need to say because I felt really good, particularly um, that Heather Tell represented and what I had communicated to her, and I'm sure other parents have as well. Our schools are the heart of Decatur. We wouldn't be the town that we are without them. But our kids are the heart of the school and we need them to have choices. It's been terrible for so many families, and I say this as a nurse who has taken care of COVID positive children. It is terrible. We need to figure this out. I also had a question about what the difference is, why pod facilitators are able to go back into the classroom and be around children, but people seem so much more concerned about teachers. What is the actual difference in their interactions? Not in teaching, but in their interactions. Um, and I just want to say thank you for your time and I really hope that January fifth, we'll have some options to send our children back to school safely with their teachers.
Thank you. Um, Shayna, the the timer didn't get, it turned on. This freedom for all green, I obviously didn't.
That's, that's my fault. I apologize.
Okay. Just, just for the next one.
Our next speaker is Janine Deraney. It might be Jan- Janine Taylor.
I didn't understand that.
Um, um, hi, yes, I'm Heather Tell's neighbor. I have four kids. I'm a single working mom and my son has an IEP and he used to be normal in math, but now he's a year behind. And, you know, I'm also thinking about moving. I love this place, but you know, I gotta get the education. I'm extremely worried about my kids. My daughter was doing great in school. Now she's always falling behind, so I'm I'm just, I'm, but I I feel really encouraged by what I've I've heard tonight. Um, and but I just can't believe that we're such an outlier, you know, like with, I think, a hundred and eighty school districts, you know, I'm 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 not sure where this is coming from, but a hundred and sixty-five or a hundred and seventy are back. I just, I'm under the impression we don't need a lot of the committees. I I just think we need mentorship because other people are doing successfully. Let's follow their lead, you know? Um, I don't, but yeah, like, and and I'd be curious to know, what are we going to do to get Decatur kids back on par with where they should be? Um, and that's it. Thank you. And I, and I thank you all so much for for listening to these comments and our concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next person will be Ms. Becky Payne.
Hi, thank you. Um, I'm a parent of two Decatur High School students and a public health professional for over twenty years, but I'm here representing myself about the academic and emotional failures that I'm observing in my children and their friends. Um, I also would like to modify my comments based on the conversation tonight and thank you for a much more substantive and helpful update that clearly reflects what I know myself and others have been sharing with you and the board members tonight. I also want to thank Ms. Woffburn for sharing the draft DHS plans and soliciting feedback. Um, the fallout from the last attempted approach at reopening has left a heartbreaking toll on the larger community. And you all are in an unenviable position, but we need to learn from that last experience. There was inadequate communication about the who, what, and how, and I think tonight demonstrates a demonstr uh, a huge leap forward, and I want to commend you for that and encourage you to continue doing that. I also want to encourage you to use as local, as locally available data as possible. As of tonight, um, the the Cab County website shows that we are at a two percent tested positive since nine months ago in the three oh oh three oh zip code. So that's five hundred and twenty-two cumulative cases in the last nine months out of a population of twenty-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-three people in that zip code. I also want to just acknowledge that um, I think it's really important, we don't force one size solutions on all schools. The flexibility and the and capacity to handle cohorts and block schedules are vastly different for elementary versus high school students. The mixing in hallways is different and the capacity to accommodate block schedules affords more time for teachers to attend to both virtual and in-person students. Um, I also would like to encourage you to consider a pledge from students and families who do choose to return in person. I think it would address some of the misinformation and fear that is circulating. I don't believe that any family genuinely wants to be the family that sends a sick child knowingly back to school, but it would serve as a reminder and an assurance that those who are choosing to attend understand their responsibility and continuing to foster a safe environment. And while you have improved communication tonight and you've made some commitments to do so, I really feel strongly that it's important. I reiterate, you cannot communicate enough as we draw closer to December and January. Please continue with the weekly communication that you've just promised, both from central office and each principal. Continue to make draft plans available and answer questions and remove the ability for those of us without information to create stories that fill the void. Uh, thank you again for your leadership and again, appreciate the teachers, the staff and all of you for the time and extra effort um, and personal sacrifice you're putting into this.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. Our next person is Skip Fossett. Skip, if you unmute yourself.
Hi, um, I'm the father of two daughters. My eldest uh, saw her senior year end in March. My younger one has spent her senior year to date in her bedroom. I'm pretty sure we all agree science is real and I appreciate your efforts based on science from the onset of the COVID pandemic. There's a saying, plan your work, work your plan. It's clear you've been busy planning your work and now thank you for that. As of last weekend, a hundred and, out of a hundred and eighty-one school districts in Georgia, we are one of only ten at a hundred percent virtual. I implore you, it is time to put into work the plan. While you've been planning how to work around COVID, another side of the science equation has been unfolding. Unfortunately, our children, the students of Decatur, the test group, the data, their stories, problems and challenges are moving in the wrong direction. Our children should not be samples for an experiment our schools need to open. I'm a seven thirty-seven captain at a major US airline. No, not the one here in Atlanta. Like schools, my company and industry shut down in some form or fashion at the initial onslaught of COVID. I commute to, as a passenger to work. Once I get there, I go to the front pointing in and fly jets all over North America, the Caribbean, lately Central and Latin America. I also teach and instruct the teaching. The Center for our fifteen thousand pilots shut down for about three weeks in April. After thorough cleaning, protocols were implemented, it reopened and training resumed. Measures are simple, not easy, but it's not rocket science. So how is this relevant? My office, the jets I fly have heap of filters. All CSD schools have the newest filtration systems. Mitigation and prevention measures are simple. They just have to be implemented with appropriate policies and procedures. For airlines, the bottom line is measured in dollars as a profit or loss on a balance sheet. For our children, the bottom line is inadequate education, although excellent education has long been a hallmark here in Decatur. Bottom line for virtual school is showing negative returns. If it were measured in financial terms, it would be a loss. It's time to stop the losses. As an essential worker, I've been working since March with only that three week break. The parents in Decatur value and support our teachers. My understanding is a majority of them want to return to have face to face learning. Dr. Duty early mentioned, earlier mentioned alternatives for those deemed at risk. For remaining t- teachers insisting to remain virtual, that is their choice. As adults, they have alternative choices. Our children stuck at home do not. The airlines went back to work. Customers by choice have slowly begun to return. In our equation, our children, your In our equation, our children, your students, are the customers. The majority who desire a return to face-to-face do not have a choice. It's simple, not easy. Open the schools, please. Bring the teachers back, then our children. We've already paid for a quality education. Our children deserve it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next person is Nicole Hutchison.
Cole, um. Hi, sorry, technical issues. My name is Nicole Hutchison. I have three children in the City Schools of Decatur School System. I have one who is a senior at DHS, a Renfro middle school student and a fourth grader at Fave. Um, I just wanted to extend my thanks tonight. You know, this is the, it, it's been a real struggle as we have, um, children that have IEPs and, um, struggle with the virtual learning model. And, you know, just to hear that we are looking like we are, are, you know, making real progress with our committees, um, to, to be able to get the kids that really need to be back in the classroom, in the classroom, that is just a real relief for me tonight. And I, I just wanted to say thank you. There are no easy answers to any of this. And I just wanted to, you know, tell the board and Dr. Duty and the teachers and everybody there and the committee, um, that are working on this, um, just thank you for investing all the time, um, you know, to make this all work. So that's all. Thank you.
Our next person will be Shayla Hayner. Shayla.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Shayla Hayner. I am a CSD parent of a first grader at Winona Park Elementary. My fourth grader is face-to-face at St. Thomas Moore, where they have been successfully using a concurrent teaching model since mid-August. I also have a three-year-old whom we've pulled from College Heights in August in favor of face-to-face option at Decatur First Preschool. I have had a unique opportunity to observe the variation in each of my children, given their different schooling circumstances. Both my fourth grader and my three-year-old are thriving. They are safely interacting with their teachers and peer cohorts on campus, and I am confident that they are receiving a high-quality education. My first grader continues to struggle with virtual learning. In addition to my concern for her mental health and emotional well-being, I am not at all confident she is receiving the adequate education that she is entitled to. The lack of confidence has nothing to do with her amazing teacher, but with the limitations of an entirely virtual platform. Similar to some of the folks that spoke previously this evening, the state of Georgia has 181 public school districts and 171 of those districts are currently providing a safe face-to-face learning option. The current community spread varies within each of these districts and does not appear to be correlated to their ability to provide a safe face-to-face option for learning. As of last weekend, CSD is only one of 10 Georgia school districts that are 100% virtual. Of those 10 districts, we are not in good company regarding past academic performance in areas like high school proficiency rates. So my question is, what is CSD doing to ensure our students are receiving an adequate education in an entirely virtual environment? Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you, Shayla. Our next person will be Mary Elsie.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm trying with this technology stuff, just like our kids are. Um, I just wanted to say thank you guys so much. I have really enjoyed hearing from Shayla, Nicole, Skip, Becky, Jo- uh, Janine, Sarah, and Chuck. I don't know that I can really add or amplify much more other than every word y'all have spoken is ringing true for us too. Virtual learning has pretty much been a disaster. It has been so, so hard on us. I know there are concerns as it relates to public health and, and whatnot, but I also know tons of schools have gone back successfully. And I just really don't understand why this is being committed to death. I think we need some leadership who will stand up and say, this is what we're gonna do and this is how we're gonna do it. I think it's great that Decatur has such a positive, welcoming attitude towards wanting to hear from all voices, but at some point in time, somebody's gotta make a decision. And, um, I'm encouraged by what I heard tonight, but I'm a little fearful as well, just given the fact that past plans have been set aside when vocal voices get involved. And, um, I'm hearing still a lot of if in January, and I don't think we need to wait on any kind of federal policy or mandate to get these kids back to school. We have models that are working, so let's follow them. And thank you all so much for your time and letting the public comment. That's it. Thank you.
Next person will be Becky Lemmons.
Hello. I am Becky Lemmons, an eighth grader at Renfro, and I have twin fifth graders at Tally. The eighth grader is doing very well. He's enjoying his block schedule. But my fifth graders are doing very poorly and, you know, their, their story is not unique. It's, their teachers are amazing. It's just this is not an environment for especially younger kids. And as concerned as I, their academics, I'm much more concerned about their anxiety and, you know, what we've seen for their mental health since they've been stuck at home. I'm also concerned about the long-term harm to the district, as was mentioned earlier. There are people leaving Decatur and I personally know of 10 families who've pulled their kids out of the schools and private school or homeschool, and that concerns me a lot. I would just echo everybody's comments, barding, looking at January 5th as the date and working toward that and rather than having things more up in the air. And would just ask that whatever can be done for our teachers who are so valuable, to have them be and feel safe, please do it. This just cannot go on this way. My students are, my students, my children are watching their cousins and friends and other districts go back successfully. And it's, it's hard to watch when my kids are stuck here day after day and it's just getting harder and harder and more and more difficult for them to learn. So, um, all of that to say, um, you know, I appreciate everybody's hard work on this. I hope that, like everybody else, we can have some firm plans very soon and we will do whatever we can as quickly as we can to have a plan to get back to school safely. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next person will be Greg Hutchinson. But I'm not finding him. So we're gonna move on. Taylor Erby. Not finding Taylor either. Okay, next person.
Shayna, there's a Nicole Hutchison. I wonder, is it spelled the same?
Cole just spoke.
Oh, okay.
So we'll move on to Margaret Ciccarelli.
Hi there, can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. My name is Margaret Ciccarelli and I should make very clear that my comments tonight are on behalf of my family and not my employer. Thank you, board members and CSD staff for your service to our community. Your job is harder than we know. I have three kids, two at Westchester and one at Fave. I'm addressing you tonight to ask for a safe face-to-face option for my kids. Kids like my boys at Westchester. Despite wonderful teachers who continue to work so hard to meet their needs, my six and seven-year-old boys are floundering. Both have been evaluated by their pediatrician and prescribed Ritalin in hopes that it will help them connect in a virtual setting. Despite this and assistance from a wonderful reading tutor and virtual facilitators, our boy's mental health continues to decline. Our six-year-old was referred to a therapist due to disengagement in virtual school and angry, frustrated reactions in the virtual school setting. After $700 of counseling, his therapist suggested it would be difficult to continue working with him because he is disengaged and angry in virtual therapy. I shouldn't have to share details about my children's mental health struggles publicly and it's not fair to them that I have. But I do it in an effort to help folks understand that Decatur parents, what Decatur parents mean when they say that their kids are struggling and they need a safe face-to-face option. It's my understanding that my family's experience isn't unique. 504 and psych requests are up across the, the, the district. It will take us years to help our kids through this academically and emotionally. And we say to ourselves, yes, this is tragic, but the greater good is being served by protecting stakeholders in 100% virtual setting. I myself said the same and watched with deep concern when the school districts across Georgia opened earlier this year. You've heard that many are open now and they're operating successfully despite lack of guidance from state and federal leaders. Have we learned from them? So as we move forward, especially during increased transmission numbers that we're experiencing, let's start with students who need to come back first. Those with special needs, those in early grades, and those who, whose needs assessments indicate they should come back. Also consider allowing CSD employees' own kids to return if they choose. Pair these students with teachers who agree to come back. Take safety precautions like enhanced PPE and provide accommodations with teachers with significant comorbidities, but don't short-change virtual learners. Pair them with teachers who want to stay virtual. Commit to longer periods of face-to-face or virtual and switching teachers mid-year is better than allowing no choice at all. And above all, please show leadership. This community has been at war over school reopening. Our student enrollment numbers are out, as are the states. Students are leaving and public schools and stakeholders are in jeopardy. Please help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next person is Natasha Whistle. Not finding her. Natasha. So we will move on to Ginger Lemon. Ginger, if you can, there you go.
Yeah. Hi, how are you? Thank you. I really appreciate all the feedback, especially from the board and from Dr. Diddy. It's been very enlightening listening in, especially to everybody's story. And I will start by saying that I am not an expert. I'm not a scientist and I'm not an administrator. I'm a parent and I'm watching my children struggle. It's impactful and it's heartbreaking. And I'm putting my trust in y'all's hands to make sure that we have an option to some sort of back-to-safe learning environment. I will say that my children are privileged. My company supports working from home, so I'm able to be at home and to be helpful to them when possible. We have means to supplement my kids with education, with tutors, um, and, and educational coaching. My kids have a robust, robust network of friends and family and neighbors to help their learning environment. However, with this privilege and support, my children are still failing in the school system right now. Remote-based learning does not work for them. If, if my children are struggling and they are privileged, my concern is like the other children that don't have the same type of support and assistance. How are they doing both academically, emotionally, and physically? My ask, my beg, I would like an option come January to have these kids back in face-to-face learning. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next person will be Jeffrey State.
Members of the board, Superintendent Diddy, good evening. First, thank you so much for your service to our community. Yeah, my name is Jeff State and I'm the father of a DHS graduate last year and a sophomore this year. I'm the chair of the Department of Political Science at Emory and I'm a teacher and I'm an administrator and a planner of in-person and virtual instruction. Many years ago, when my daughter was in fifth grade, her mother experienced a pretty serious life-threatening, life-threatening, as serious could be, extremely scary health condition. To say that unsettled us was, uh, would be a dramatic understatement. My daughter was aware of everything that was happening and she was scared. That spring, her first and third grade teacher started taking her to breakfast on the weekends just to check in, to keep in touch and to tell her that she was safe and cared for by this community. DHS teachers are critical components of our community's infrastructure. They help us collectively raise up our children. They not only inspire and promote learning, they give our students confidence and they make them feel safe. Indeed, making them feel safe is their first instructional principle. It's the first instructional principle in our district, as it should be in any district. And they don't stop pursuing this mission when the school day is over and they don't stop when our kids move on. And I tell you this story because I believe you confront an opportunity in our community. It's an opportunity to tackle a vexing policy problem that we all know. To give a choice for families who trust that the CSD can offer a safe in-person model, an opportunity as well for a choice for families who can prefer, prefer to keep their kids home. I implore you as well to offer a choice to our teachers. There's a moral reason for that, but I will focus on two pragmatic reasons, which speak to two serious problems that you confront in your models of instruction. First, parents who want children to return to in-person instruction want their kids to feel safe and no amount of COVID planning or emails or cute signs is gonna make that happen. Our children will feel safe because their teachers make them feel safe at school and it will be so much easier for them to do this if they feel safe at school and empowered to do their job, to be part of an innovative solution of our problems. Second, parents who want their kids to work at home want a dedicated instructor, not a teacher with a mask talking to a laptop. The concurrent instructional plan is the third best solution. Not to say that it cannot be done, but it ought not to be our starting point. Our teachers have already been asked to invent an online curriculum with minimal training. We're now asking them to invent a curriculum for in-person instruction in a weird setting and simultaneously reinvent a virtual instruction plan in a new online setting with engagement through a laptop. As a university teacher, I can tell you it's too much to ask. My colleagues from around the country have been asked to do this, reporting considerable problems. Many are just switching back to virtual learning entirely because frankly, university professors have given the choice and flexibility to make those choices. This is all consistent with a considerable body of pedagogical research on this model. CSD does not have the resources, just get staff or training to do what you need to do to make this work. Renfro already has a model to make this work already. It can be done. There's no first option available, but when a second best option exists, I implore you to take it. There's time and your teachers can help you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next person is Stephen Dougherty. I see a Jahan.
Yes, hello. Hi, guys. Hey, this is Steve Dougherty. Thank you, you guys, for putting this all together and letting us have a, a voice to lend our concern and to tell you that we are desperately wanting our kids to go back to school. We have three kids, uh, one in high school, we have one in middle school, and when, we have one at Tally. Our family has been dealing with, this is, is, as well as everybody else has. And we have been very fortunate to have a, a parent who stays home like, um, some other families near us. And we get to, uh, have that support, but even with that help and that support for our kids, they are still suffering, just like everyone else is. So, you know, I, I don't wanna go into any more detail. I think what everyone is saying is, is very relevant. It feels like we are all trying to persuade you to give us an option to go back to school, to let our kids have face-to-face learning. So we just want to reiterate that and encourage you to give us an option so that we can put our kids back in school. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Steve. Next person we're looking to hear from is Bo King. Not finding Bo. So we're gonna move on to Carmen Sultan. Carmen, you can unmute.
All right, thank you, Shayna. My name is Carmen Sultan. I'm the current chair of the CSD Black Parents Alliance. I spoke at the last school board meeting. In addition to that role, I'm also an emergency room physician at Children's Healthcare of Atlanta, but I'm not here in that role. I want to remind folks of the comments that myself and India Epps and some of the folks from Beacon Hill read on behalf of the teachers and the staff of our Black and Brown staff from the last school board meeting. I just want to kind of circle back on that. To remind people of some of the risk that the teachers feel like they're undertaking in this return to school plan. Let us not ignore some of those very critical points. I just want to kind of submit that in our minds. It's very interesting to me, the very stark change in tone that this board meeting has taken in parent comments. I think that we have a very vocal group of folks that are very interested in face to face option. And I'm not anti-return to school, but I am very pro that we do this in an organized and safe fashion for not only our children, but for our staff and teachers. So I implore all of the parents that have spoken today to let the committee do its work. You have physicians, you have CDC experts, you have epidemiologists. You have folks like me who work with sick children every single day, so let us do our work. We will make a decision and give recommendations to Dr. Diddy that are in the best interest of your students. But what we will not do is rush a decision through because it is in, in a decision that is inconvenient for, for families. We're going to do what is the right thing or give recommendations that appear to be what is in the best interest of all of our families. So I think it's just interesting, the dramatic change in tone that we've seen here. But I want to remind all of us that what we do need to have is a plan that is in the best interest of not only our own individual selves, but the community as a whole, and especially all of our Black and Brown students, teachers, and staff. So I just want to bring that point home. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Carmen. We're going to go back to Bo King. And Bo, if you unmute.
Thank you. As the last speaker noted, there is a different tone at this meeting. And obviously, the bulk of the public comments are running in a very different direction from the public comments at the last meeting. That dynamic has also been present on social media. I, as many of you, have the misfortune of being on Facebook and are watching incredibly bitter arguments among a group that has, as far as I can tell, great overlap in both interests and concerns. And I will be frank with you, members of the board and Dr. Diddy. I think that you bear a large share of responsibility for the division in this community on the plan for returning to school. Because of the lack of communication, which has been discussed, because of the lack of transparency about what factors were being considered, and the abruptness with which the decisions have been made. There is a vacuum. There's a vacuum of understanding and a vacuum of information. And people who are suffering, one way or the other, suffering for fear over this pandemic, suffering for fear over the well-being of their children are feeling that. But the commonality of our concerns has been lost. It sounds as if you are making steps towards more transparency, more collaboration, and more communication. I urge you to continue in that direction. But I think the fact that you are seeing meetings with public comments where it appears one side spoke for the entirety of one period and now another side is speaking, when in reality, everyone speaking is on the same side is a reflection of your failure to assure these parents, whom I count myself one, that this is a transparent, thoughtful, and responsible process. I ask you, please, if you are moving in this direction of more transparency and communication, to do so. You cannot communicate enough with us. And heavens knows, there's lots of room for improvement. And I apologize if this is harsh. I've, I know some of you personally, I've always been fond of you personally, but this has been very discouraging to watch this community tear itself to pieces and of all things, competing Facebook groups. And I think some of the responsibility for that is worth examining. Thank you.
Thank you, Bo. Our next person will be Kristi McGregor.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Great. As you said, my name is Kristi McGregor. I'm a parent of two middle school students at Renfro. I serve on the Board of SEPTA, the Special Education PDA. I'm an attorney and I advocate pro bono on behalf of children with disabilities in schools. Meaning students with IEPs, 504s, and those seeking to get IEPs and 504 plans. Like everybody, the special education in a 504 community is split on the decision regarding when to open CSD for in-person learning. These students have the greatest challenges with virtual learning, but many also have coexisting conditions that put them at the greatest risk for COVID complications. Some are yearning to go back into school so they can better receive the services they need to address their disabilities, while others intend to remain in virtual learning until COVID is brought under control in our area. Either way, I want to ensure that CSD's plans for returning in person take into consideration the needs of this population. With regard to remaining or reopening for in-person learning, I strongly encourage CSD to consider a needs-based phase in to in-person learning, providing those with the greatest needs with the option to return to in-person learning first. In order to reduce the risk to those children who most need in-person learning, I encourage CSD to wait until virus numbers are substantially reduced in our area, as recommended by public health experts, before extending the option for in-person learning to all who want it. I also want to ensure that students with disabilities who remain in virtual learning, perhaps due to health conditions, are provided with the services and support they need to be successful. Until now, virtual learning plans have provided a temporary solution, but they're often insufficient and sporadically implemented. For those of you who don't know, a virtual learning plan is a plan that was written to replace an IEP during virtual learning. Students with disabilities require more services in virtual learning than they do during normal times. And I implore CSD to ensure that those services are provided in their virtual learning environment and that they're not an afterthought once CSD returns in-person learning. SEPTA joined in a recent email to Dr. Diddy about the need to improve virtual learning for those who remain virtual, including those who are medically fragile, for example. While we focus on returning to in-person, we also need to focus on improving virtual so disparities do not widen further than they already are for this population. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristi. Our next person will be Elliot Robinson.
Hi, my name is Ayanna Robinson. Elliot Robinson is my husband. We have two daughters here in the city of Decatur, one at Tally Street and one at Decatur High School. I appreciate the challenges that parents have shared this evening about the virtual environment for their students and for their children. We too have different realities and experiences here in terms of how our daughters are acclimating and experiencing virtual learning. But they, just as we, are doing their best and we do all that we can to support them. We too have the opportunity to be able to be home with them, to support them, and recognize that during this time, we all are being called upon to do more above and beyond what we would typically be doing because these are extraordinary times. I too believe that our children should be returning to school when it is appropriate. And I understand that for those who do have concerns about the experiences that their children are having at home, that there are the pod options. I think that was shared, that people have the ability to sign up for those and do encourage people to use those options if they have the ability to do so. I do struggle with the importance of using data and facts as the foundation for decision-making and not perceptions on experiences or what is perceived to be the case happening in other counties. To me, it really relies on the importance of good reliable data to really understand what is happening in those schools and what the experiences are. We are a very densely populated community and may be experiencing very different school realities than some of those others that we're talking about. So again, it's important to make sure that we have good, strong, firm data. I agree that we can have amazing teachers, but if the teachers aren't confident and comfortable in their ability to teach safely in an environment, then then even once they're in school, they will not be able to give our students and our children all that they need to have a good experience because they will be dealing with additional concerns, most importantly, their own health and safety. I ask that we stay the course that we've outlined in terms of using data, communicating effectively about what that process will be, and that we don't use hopes of wanting to get back soon to be surpassed by the importance of using data transparently to inform our decisions. I do, as well as the other parents, look forward to the day where we can send our children back into the classroom and to a learning environment with confidence with how the decisions were made. And we'll continue to do all that we can in this community to be supportive of our teachers who are working hard to take care of our children during this time. So I think that we just need to stay focused on doing what we can to ensure that the data guides us and that we give the scenarios the opportunity to play out so that when we send our kids back to school, we can do so with peace of mind.
Thank you. Our next person will be April Gore. April, if you unmute.
Sorry, I was going back and forth between some things. Hi, my name is April Beazhony. I'm a mom of three kids in City Schools of Decatur. I have one at pre-K, a second grader, and a fifth grader. All of my children have IEPs or 504s. And although they might not be thriving, uh, I don't think anyone is. We're in a global pandemic. And so the shift from this meeting to the one a month ago is stark and it's saddening. And I hear a lot of emotional pleas in this meeting about their kids' struggles, which are real. Mine are real, but you know what else is real? The people that are dying. And I don't see how we can go about this without relying on the data that we set out at the beginning, saying that we were going to follow these metrics. I'm really concerned that we are desperate for some type of normalcy and that we haven't even hit the peak yet. It, we are coming upon it. And to hear that people want to go back and open the doors regardless on January 5th is reckless and highly irresponsible, in my opinion, because I care about my community. We might have differing views on like when to go back, but I don't want to see anyone's families go through some of the struggles that I've witnessed firsthand with my neighbors, my own family, my friends who have lost their, 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 their parents. And I'm not going to get emotional on this one, but to not go through the science and to hear these key words over and over tonight about make a decision, kids in school now. Why do we have these committees? Why are we listening to the federal level? People are leaving Decatur. My kids are going to private school. Like, talk about privilege. And so I hope to God that everyone is being sincere when they say, you know, what about those kids? And they want to concern about equity. I expect none of them to say a word when these special and vulnerable populations who probably should be going back before everyone else can and that they understand that this has got to be a process. And it's got to be a process that's slow and follows the science. We need to do all that we can. I mean, these vulnerable populations have the highest academic disparities during normal COVID times. So we need to do what we can to minimize the widening of this gap during COVID. So reopening for in-person alone will not resolve this problem. If we're going to look at it through an equity lens, then I think that we need to make sure that we're improving virtual learning prior to and once in-person learning is offered, because most of these families will probably choose to stay virtual regardless. Not only that, I'm here on concerns of the teachers. What I've heard tonight is that teachers are not going to be given a choice. Teachers are going to get accommodations based on need. So why not this? Why not accommodations for students? Why isn't the default that students stay virtual until there's a proven need? And honestly, I would just like for us to really define what successful is when we're comparing ourselves to other schools that have opened. And I would like to see a real analysis of what those numbers are that we're comparing ourselves to. Again, thank you for having us here tonight and allowing us to speak. I know I've taken up a lot of time. Thank you.
Thank you, April. Our next person will be Yael Sherman.
Hi, my name is Yael Sherman. I have two kids. I have a daughter who's in kindergarten at Westchester and a son who's a fourth grader at Fay. And I understand the concerns that I've heard raised, but I've heard some characterizations of the desire to go back to safe to safe learning as convenience and, you know, being worried about success of our students. And what I want to say is that it is a mental health crisis. My kids are in crisis. My family is having such a hard time right now. And my son, who is so bright and loved school and loved learning, has completely checked out. Is having so many problems. You know, this is not the fault of his teacher, although I will say that virtual schooling is just not an adequate substitute. There's no differentiation. Kids are not being met where they are. They're not growing. And what that creates, you know, is not just a disconnection from this teacher or this year, but a disconnection from school that I think is very dangerous. So it's not a matter of convenience. It's the fact that my child is struggling in a profound way. And we are in therapy and we are seeking treatment, but the issue is situational. And it's not a matter of trying to just push teachers back. It's saying we had a plan. We want to do this safely. We want to do this with PPE. We want to do this in a way where our teachers feel safe. And I am all for switching teachers. You know, I would be more than happy to switch teachers if that meant that my kids could go back to school so that they could thrive as human beings, so that they could play with their friends and learn in an atmosphere of growth as opposed to being isolated and stuck on the computer and refusing to do assignments. And I think that, you know, we're experiencing a lot of frustration, given that the plan was to go back November 2nd and November 9th and was so quickly turned around. And the worry is that in our search for data, in our search for certainty, it will just being pushed back. And I want to say there is a very real cost to that. There is a personal cost. There is a mental health cost to that. And as has been noted, there is a cost in our community. So again, thank you for your service and your thoughts. And I'm sharing all of this because I really want to put a personal face on what it is like to be going through this now. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next person to speak will be Wule Oguney. If you unmute, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you very much. My name is Kule Oguney. I am the co-chair of the Education Committee of the Beacon Hill Black Alliance for Human Rights. I have a ninth grader at the high school and a sixth grader at Renfro Middle School. I will speak personally for myself as an individual. I want my children to go back to school. I've heard a lot of the comments here. I think we can do it sometime soon in the new year. Those who want to go back to school, go back to school. Those who want to remain virtual, remain virtual. I don't think anybody needs to be pushed one way or the other. The same with the teachers, the teachers who want to return. I would gladly, for me, the in-person experience. I, I would gladly, for me, the in-person experience is more valuable than the teacher who's teaching my children. Just personal opinion. But now on to the comments I wanted to speak about. And this, in this, I'm speaking in my capacity as the Education Committee co-chair for Beacon Hill. Uh, I think we all agree that there's going to be significant loss of learning. Uh, how significant? We don't know. For some students, it may be just a month of loss of a learning. For others, it may be a year. We, as a community, as a district, need to start planning for the 2021, 22 academic year. I think this year is going to be suboptimal. I don't see us being able to catch up. Whether we return or whether we're doing a hybrid. So we need, I'm asking the board and Dr. Duty. Please let us establish a committee immediately. To start planning towards the 2021, 22 academic school year. We're going to be recommending, I would love to be, Beacon Hill would love to sit on that committee. But we will be recommending an extra month of classes before in-person school begins in August. And I'm hoping that we will be back to normal by August of next year. We are recommending that Saturday school be established at the middle and high schools throughout that school year. We've got to consider how many increase in the number of students who repeat the academic year. Because there's going to be a lot, a lot of loss. So I, I'm, I'm going to be communicating via email, but. That's um, that's a big, big topic for us at Beacon Hill. We have seen significant loss of learning among our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next person will be Adele.
I didn't understand that.
Sorry about that. I'm not finding Adele, so we're going to move on to Susan Camp.
Um, thank you. My name is Susan Camp. I am a parent to a first grader and second grader at Claremont Elementary School. One of which has an I E P. I also serve on the Education Committee for Beacon Hill. And I did speak um, at last month's meeting um, to amplify the voices of our black and brown teachers and staff. Um, you know, like everybody else, my idea of, for what I wanted to speak about is evolving. Um, I also have the misfortune of establishing the C S D Parents Facebook group. Um, to the point that some other speakers made, that was done because the communication from the district has always been. Not great. And I wanted to organize parents in a way that we could help each other. Um, so we could communicate effectively, more effectively with one another. And, and it's been unfortunate that we are seeing the debate. About schools opening play out in real time. To the point where another group has spun off the, the face-to-face, safe face-to-face reopening group. Which I believe many of those members are the ones that you heard of, heard from speaking tonight. Who are being very selective about who they'll allow to join their conversation and. Um, kick out medical professionals because they speak the truth. And so it does give the impression that they want a full reopen at any cost. So I just, you know, want to make you guys aware of what is happening at the community level and how. Parents are organizing themselves into these different camps. And it is really sad to see the division and I really appreciated the comments that I heard from Carmen Sutton. And um, also from April, she is saving me time because I, I just want to echo what she said. But my original reason for coming on here, back to the lack of communication is. The day after last month's board meeting, we lost the Head Start program at College Heights. And I went above and beyond to reach out to the district at every single level to try. To help families that were displaced from their childcare overnight. And I got nothing back from Central Office. I was deferred at every level. And I was able to work with Gail Rothman to try to do what we could for those families and teachers. But I had to do all of that work around C S D. I could not do that work with C S D. And to this day, I still have not received a response from Dr. Duty about what is going on with those Head Start kids. Um, so yes, communication is a huge issue. And I, um, I'm really, my feelings are just really hurt because I spent an entire week of my life. Um, reaching out to the C D I employees to let them know about the pod jobs that are opening. Reaching out to the pod facilitator, to Mr. Creedie, to let him look, be on the lookout for candidates for that pool. I reached out to the district and even drafted a press release because all of the, there was all this misinformation out there about why we lost the program. And D E F was ready to step in and help try to fund placement for these kids and nothing. I've heard nothing. And I have reached out individually to at least five or six different C S D employees. And I was deferred at every single level and I was reaching out to help. And I want, I believe in giving grace at every single level. I understand that, you know, losing the Head Start program on the heels of this announcement that was, that. Created a lot of rift, I'm in the community and was probably putting out fires everywhere at Central Office. But you have a team of parents who want.
Ms. Camp, your time. Ms. Camp.
Do you have parents that want to help? Let us help. That's all I'll say.
Our next person is Diana O'Neill.
Good evening, everyone. First, I, I need to say that these opinions are my own and do not reflect the beliefs of my employer. So my name is Diana O'Neill. I'm a 24-year resident of Decatur. I have a 14-year-old freshman son. Um, at Decatur High School. And first, I do want to thank Yael, I believe, for her courage. And her honesty in sharing something that is clearly so deeply hurtful. Um, I too have a son who has transitioned from being um, a good student and a capable student to a student who is in crisis. I have um, multiple tutors and multiple support systems and incentive systems in place to help him. Deliver his own educational experience. Um, so for myself and many others, this is not a matter of convenience or politicking or trying to take sides. We are trying to do the best for our kids who are in crisis. And what I have seen is that Decatur itself is a victim of excessive consensus forging. At some point, we have to be able to make a decision. I think over the course of eight months, we have had time to consider the options. To look at best practices and to arrive at a plan that provides both sets of families, those who want to be in school. And those who want to be at home, the option to do just that. We are sitting in a state where 96% of the schools have figured this out. So what is so different about Decatur? What is special about us? Why are we not able to arrive at the right facts and decisions and collaboration? To get past an impasse and do the right thing for our kids? And if you want to talk about facts and science, let's look at the facts and science. You have the World Health Organization. You have the CDC saying that 99% of people who come down with COVID recover. So to close the schools en masse blanket when every, when the majority of schools across our state have chosen to provide options is indefensible. I believe we are taking a sledgehammer to the solution when a scalpel would do. I don't want to jeopardize anybody who is at risk or any teacher who does not want to personally take a chance that they are not comfortable with. At the same time, that does not mean we have to unplug our school system entirely and put these kids in a virtual. Environment where they are falling behind every day. So I thank you for giving me the stage. I apologize for some emotion. I tried to contain it, but it is too real. And I asked this leadership team to step up, make a decision, end the endless rounds of negotiation. And come to something that does right by our children, by our teachers and by our administrators. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final person is Ms. Bridget Goodman. Ms. Goodman, if you can unmute yourself.
Okay. Uh, good evening. My name is Bridget Goodman. I'm a junior at Decatur High School. And I join, I would like to start by saying that I really believe teachers are the backbone of our school system. Um, so if we're not protecting teachers and prioritizing teachers, I think we need to change that. So one thing that I heard that I found troubling was not prioritizing accommodations. For teachers who live with someone who is at risk. Um, because that puts teachers in an impossible position where they'd have to choose between their living situation and their career. I really appreciate all that C S D is doing to accommodate our teachers and make things work. And, but I still think there's room to grow. Um, I'd also really like to respond to comments I've heard about uh, mental health this evening. And while I completely emphasize, empathize with those comments. I would like to mention that I don't think these mental health challenges are going anywhere. And I think if we do reopen, uh, those challenges will only snowball and will, there will be new ones. Um, so for example, if I were to return to school and I were to inadvertently, uh, infect. Uh, a classmate or a teacher or my classmate's parent or someone in my teacher's household. I don't know how I could live with myself. I don't know how anyone could. Um, and I think that's a very real challenge. And I, given where COVID is and our lack of treatment we have accessible and lack of vaccine. Um, I think these are really real possibilities that we have to contend with. Um, I would also like to add, I was really troubled by a mindset I've been hearing, which is that we have to reopen. January 5th, no matter what. And I think that mindset uh, is ignorant of the data that may present itself and what we're currently seeing. I'd also like to add that schools don't exist in vacuums. Uh, so one thing we've seen associated with schools reopening is an uptick in parties. Uh, which as we know are super spreader events. And I think that we're facilitating uh, something that could really have damaging effects for our community. And we need to think about the holistic responsibility we have. Um, so that is all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Bridget.
Okay, thank you to all who commented. So I'm not quite sure how to proceed. We could, um, I feel like we've, we've. We've, we've commented on the plan and I kind of feel like we should let that stand. If anyone. Like to say something. Give me a sign. Tasha.
Um, I want to thank the community for coming and speaking to us. And for those who have emailed us, um, we apologize if we can't get to all of them, but I do promise you that we read all of them. Um, I just want to point out what, what we're kind of seeing. Is that we are living in a country that is completely divided. And we are living in a state that is completely divided. And unfortunately, we are also living in a city that is completely divided. And we are not used to that. Um, but it is, there's a, there's a few factors that contributing to that, but it is certainly um. A global issue that we are not immune to. And. I think what I would like to stress and the same thing that I stressed at the last meeting. Is that the decisions that we are making and the work that is being done in the background. For multiple hours a day by David and his team. Are for the best interest of the students and your children. And they always are at the front forefront of the decisions that are being made. And there is no agenda. There is no malicious intent. There was no malicious intent when we were planning on going back to school. There was no malicious intent when we looked at the data and decided not to go back to school. And there's no malicious intent by keeping our kids home right now until we come up with a better plan. And I want to stress that I know that trust is not there. And so we will continue to try to heal. So that we, that, so that there can be trust built back in our city. So that you can trust that what we say and what we're doing is actually what we're doing. Um, and so just please understand. And this is, this is a very hard place for us to be. I just want to share the. Humanity side of being on the board. This is a very hard place to be. Because we were attacked personally. When we were planning on taking the kids back to school. And now we're being attacked personally. With the plan to keep the kids at home. And I'm not complaining about that because I signed up for this job and this is part of the job. But what I will promise you is that we are going to stay steadfast. In what we are doing to, to best facilitate all the kids and their needs. Regardless of who attacks us. And how and why. The main focus will still be and always be. Doing the best for the kids in this district and trying to do the best for our kids in this district. And that is not going to change. Um, and that has always been at the core. It's the core of why we're on the board. It's the core of what David and his team does. I can tell you that with 100% certainty. That that's what it was last month. That's what it was all summer and that's what it is today. And that won't change. And so we'll continue to work on building that trust as a community together. Because we are so divided. That, that there seems to be nothing one side can say to the other that the other side believes. And probably because there should only be one side. The community of Decatur. Um, so. I'm sorry if I sound a little frustrated. Because I, I personally was very inspired by this past weekend. And I want to remain inspired, not just on a global level, but on a, on a local. Community level that we can heal. It's not just this country and the state that needs to heal. It's our city. And it's not just the board that needs to do that. It's everybody. We all need to agree. That we're going to put our boxing gloves down. And we're going to work together and actually listen to each other again. Um, and that's not going to happen overnight, but. That's the, that's, that's where we need to get. Um, so I do want to let all of the parents know that spoke to us last month and the parents that spoke to us today. That I hear you. And your fears and your troubles are real. One is not more real than the other, though. They are all real. And so we will continue to meet with David. I applaud David and his team for the um. Town hall meetings that are going to start every Thursday. I think that's, I think that's awesome. I think that's a great, a step in the right direction. Um, and I hope that, that those who are asking for transparency and more communication will attend. To the level, to that level, so that you can hear him speak and his team um, every week. Um, because it is for you and for ultimately for our kids. Thank you.
I'll be brief, but um, I appreciate Tasha's comments. Uh, I wish that all the people who attended this meeting and commented at this meeting could also go back and listen to the public comment at the previous meeting. I wish that all the people who attended this meeting and commented at this meeting could also go back and listen to the public comment at the previous meeting and vice versa. We as a board are maybe among the few who have listened to all comments on all sides and read all the emails. And the challenging part is that I agree with many of the things that are diametrically opposed to one another when it comes to going back, because I understand that there is fear. And to those of you who expressed, the majority of those who expressed comments last month who were fearful of going back, I want to, I want to reassure you that we've heard you and we have heard your concerns and that Dr. Duty and his team are working diligently to address those concerns in a transparent way. And to those of you who are angry that your kids haven't been given a face-to-face option, and that was the majority he spoke to us tonight, we hear you as well. And we hope that our communication tonight and ongoing efforts will give you a clear understanding of our plan and a roadmap towards work, working to get our kids safely returning back to in-person learning. Those of us on the board and Dr. Duty, we all have or have had kids in the schools. We are in this together. And so we, we appreciate everyone's comments. And for the most part, the comments that we receive and the emails we receive recognize that this is a very challenging decision. And so thank you and we appreciate hearing from you.
Tasha White is such a rock for this community. She's been a rock for me though, because there's few people I can call and say, I got a little kid at home who's suffering and Yael, I hear you. It's a mental health crisis because I got a kindergartner who is a genius, who is a pain in my butt because I'm trying to run a business and I'm trying to work from home. And I'm a teacher and I love them. And we moved to Decatur and I pay my taxes because the teachers are great. I want to fight for them. And we're here because Kunle recommends Beacon Hill and every month he shows up with these solutions and like, oh my God, this is like great idea. And he's out here planning for like August of 2021. And I'm, I don't even know what I'm having for dinner tomorrow night. And you know, like both sides here, I mean, you're absolutely right. We are in a mental health crisis and we're also in a global pandemic and the, the word and things, Chuck, yes, we've read all of your emails. We have, oh my God, but nothing has changed. Like if you, if your conclusion is that David and his staff and Dr. Furman and Dr. Beam, Dr., if your conclusion is that they're making decisions based on the number of Facebook comments, then you should stop paying your taxes and move somewhere else because your respect for the city schools of Decatur is not very high. And I know that they need to improve communications better. Because going into this global pandemic, their communications pandemic communication strategy sucked. And I don't know why they didn't have it in place. My God. And it could have been better. And it's, you know, who knew? And we need to work on that. And that is probably the fault of the board as well. And we constantly talk about it too. And it's a struggle and it's a balancing act. And I don't have good answers, but I hear all of you. Becky, I hear you with your fifth graders. And they're not ideal. And you know, all of the people spoke this weekend and last weekend. I don't think they're good answers. And you know, I'm not sure that those other counties have it solved as well. I had a long, long phone call with my nephew whose school elsewhere in Georgia shut down for the fifth time for two weeks and he's sitting at home because dealing with the mental health crisis. And he's like, I just wish we were virtual. And he's crying and he's afraid to cry in front of his dad and that's a whole nother set of issues. And God, I hope he doesn't listen to this, whatever. It's happening everywhere. And yeah, that's it. Tasha, thank you. Those words were inspiring.
I have nothing to add, but I do appreciate those comments as well. David, would you like to give a superintendent's report?
Yeah, I shared most of my comments earlier with the other updates, but I just want to echo what you all have shared. And I also echo your thoughts, James, about how eloquent Tasha was in sharing like the, just really framing what it is that it, it, a lot of us, I think, are feeling. So Tasha, thank you. That I think you did a great job of really encapsulating what I was trying to think how to say. And you nailed it. This is a challenging time. We feel very deeply for all the comments and, and I appreciate that we, while it was fairly one side of the comments we heard tonight, we did hear some comments from both sides tonight. And that's not always the case. And I think it just highlights how challenging this, that we, this is of what we're facing right now. So I just, I really appreciate hearing from people like all the board members said, we read every single email. We don't always respond and we're trying to get better about that. So you know that we're reading it, but we do, we read them. And we, we've listened to that input and I just really appreciate it. So I thank you for all the input. I know how much pain and struggle and strife there is in the community and we will continue doing our best to do our role and do what we can to, to minimize that. So I just really appreciate that. So that's all I'll share for comments today.
Maybe the one thing I'll add is that as Tasha said, I think that the, the way that we have a conversation makes a huge difference in the conversation itself. And I actually really appreciated the, the comments tonight from both sides because I thought it was very, I thought that it was good. It was a good discussion. And and that makes us easier. As Tasha said, this has been an extraordinarily difficult period of time. And it doesn't make it any easier to have, you know, to have comments that are attacking us. It just, just doesn't help. But that didn't happen tonight and I appreciate it. So thank you all. The other thing in terms of a board report, I'm not going to do a very good job at this, but we have some kudos that I'd like to, to read before we lose all of our people. And so ordinarily for the chair's report, we try to recognize good things that are happening throughout the district. We have a spotlight earlier with the, from, from the high school. And in addition, we've got some, some other things. What we've been trying to do, one of the things that we've been trying to do as a system is on Tuesdays, it's Take Action Tuesday. It's highlighting kids within our system who are doing things to make our community a better place. And the first one, and forgive me, I'm going to get, I'm not going to pronounce the, so someone help me, but it's Kudus Morris. Got no help here. But who created a fundraiser to help the homeless? So he's already raised almost $8,000 to benefit Nicholas House. This is great stuff. The second Take Action Tuesday acknowledges this group of students at the Beacon Hill Black Alliance for Human Rights who formed a committee, the Confederate Monument Removal Committee, who having gotten the monument removed, moved on to organize a cultural event to celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day on October 11. It also honored the indigenous and African-American connection as, you know, the two being so closely intertwined. The third Take Action Tuesday is a group of students who founded an environmental club. I think this is at the high school. No, that's not at the high school. Most of these students are members of Fave and Oakhurst. And so these students hold virtual meetings on Mondays during the Wellness Wednesdays. They pick up trash at their local parks, including Mead Road Park and McCoy Park. They're currently working on a partnership with the Wild Center to start a community compost. This was started by Bill Duggan and Violet Whitfield. And so this is the kind of community action that we, we want to celebrate here in the city of Decatur. Let's see, we also have some, some activities. The, the high school has most of the, most of the kudos for today. I think it's a result of the high school having more students present on campus, but thanks to the DHS student volunteers who put together 20 donated picnic tables with Ms. Lofstrm last week. These will be used by students to eat outside when we return to school. Congratulations to Kristen Esnard, the winner of the 2020 Mike Sadler Award at Cole's Scholarship Camp. The DHS varsity softball wrapped up a quick but successful season. Team finished fourth in the region and qualified for the state tournament. The Decatur varsity football team, and I don't think this is, well, it's probably been said before, but I don't know that it's been said in a very long time. The Decatur varsity football team is undefeated. They have a 5-0 record and so they are going to the state playoffs. They have two more games in the regular season. November 13th away versus Southwest DeKalb and November 20th away at St. Pius. We, we attended the last game Friday and it was just a joy to, to watch these kids play and to watch them feed and to be back in the football stadium after having missed it for most of this season. You know, it was really wonderful. In cross-country, our boys and girls cross-country teams finished their season this past Saturday at the state meet. The girls' team finished in fourth place. And the boys' team finished as the state runners-up, finishing two points by the leading team. Junior, let's see, Junior Christian Gonzalez was the individual state champion. Congratulations to Junior. And teammate and senior Ewan McNally, I apologize if I didn't pronounce that correctly, finished just seconds behind Christian as the individual runner-up. It was a terrific accomplishment and congratulations to them all. And that will conclude the chair's report. And I think with that, we should move on to remaining business.
Yeah, our consent is the next one. And I did, I meant to share one more thing. I just wanted to thank Shayna for running the public comment. You know, Maggie did it last week and I got spoiled and Shayna offered to take it off this, we take it over this week. And it is just such a treat to be able to focus on the comments and not managing the comments. And so I just want to thank Shayna for that. That was really very much appreciated. So very well. Our consent items are the next ones. And I just wanted to check in with James. I think maybe you have to abstain from the bond vote. Is that correct? And if so, we should pull that from the consent agenda.
All right. That's great. But that's fine. I can just mute or not participate.
Okay, okay. So we, so we'll move the bond resolution to an action item. And we need a motion to approve the other consent items, which are Romanate I, the personnel report, Romanate II, the school nutrition report, III, the financial reports, and V, the change in the academic calendar. Do we have a motion?
Put some motion.
All right, we have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? I guess the consent items. All, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. So the consent items are approved. Let's move directly to the first action item, which is the bond resolution from which James was abstaining. But David, could you please explain?
Lenita, do you, I think you're there. Can you step in and just fill us in on the bond resolution real quick?
I sure can. Pull up my notes right quick. So the bond resolution is similar to a refinancing. We have a 2010 series bond and it is, it qualifies for refunding, which is again comparable to refinancing. So we have the potential to save in excess of 1.2 million by refinancing the bond. And I think I provided you all with the summary and the history of the bond. Now answer any questions that you may have.
I just want to thank you, Lenita. This is really awesome that we're able to take advantage of this. And you got on this very early in your tenure here. And so I just really appreciate you getting on it because it is going to save us a lot of money and that's great for us.
Second that. Thank you, Lenita. Do we have a motion to approve? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the bond resolution 2010 series.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye.
Aye.
All right. So the last main item to discuss is the accreditation visit and process. And so Dr. Furman is going to walk us through, believe it or not, we just wanted to add to 2020 and all of the fun that we're having and it's an accreditation year. And so she's going to walk us through that as well as how it is going to impact how we do our district improvement planning in the future. So she's going to update us on that. So Dr. Furman, you want to take it away?
Good evening, board members, Dr. Duty. And I know this is always a fun topic, but I think we can make the most out of this accreditation process coming up. Go ahead, Shayna, to the next slide. So just to give you some context for accreditation, every five years is a five-year cycle. So we, 2016 was our last accreditation visit. So we are up for accreditation in 2021. There really isn't an option to delay this process. It's really best to just get this done. So there are a couple of changes because of COVID and travel restrictions. So I'll go through some of those as we, as I touch on the process. I just wanted to note, the timing is very challenging. We know that this is, there's already a lot on people's plates. Everyone is very busy. It's a very stressful time. But I think we can use this opportunity to really take a close look at what's going well for our district and what are any areas of improvement that we have. So we really are looking forward to embracing the feedback that we get from Cognia on this process. And as you heard, you just mentioned, Cognia is the company now. It used to be Advanced Ed and Saks. But there has been some mergers with different accreditation companies. And now everything has merged from measured progress and advanced ed into a company called Cognia. And they are now our accreditation process or company that we're, that's going to run this process. So the process is pretty similar. We have to complete a self-evaluation as a district and every, all of our schools have to complete a self-assessment. We have to do some surveys. They'll come, they'll review all of the documents that we submit. They'll come for a visit, give us feedback on that. So the process is pretty similar. There's a couple of little things have changed with the process. Their standards are a little different. But pretty much the same process that we've done before. Shayna, if you want to go to the next slide, please. So just what I'm going to go over with you is a quick overview of that process, the timeline and what you should expect as board members and how you'll be involved in the accreditation process. Thank you, Shayna. So this is just a large overview of the whole accreditation process. So the red boxes are just the planning and kind of setting the stage. And then after we plan and set the stage and do our training, we break into some smaller groups. The blue is identifying what the school teams will do. The yellow is what the district will do. And then we come back together for the green, which is our engagement review process. So I'm going to go through each of these sections a little more in detail. Go ahead, Shayna. So first, the training and evaluation phase, we pretty much, this is completed. We've done the trainings. There were some modules that we completed as leadership teams. So all that has been done. All the materials have been posted and people are just reviewing those as they need additional follow-up. And then I have scheduled weekly check-ins with our lead evaluator from Cognia. And that I have found to be really valuable because as I work through the process, I'm always like jotting down tons of questions to ask her. She's looking through the documents as I create them and giving us feedback through, on the process and what we're doing. So that's been really, really helpful to help us make sure that we're headed in the right direction as we get closer to the accreditation visit. Thank you, Shayna. So our school teams, they have three big jobs as school teams. So first, they have to assess themselves on the three Cognia standards. And the three standards are leadership capacity, instructional capacity and resource capacity. So they'll put together small group teams. They'll review those standards and assess themselves on those. They'll also have stakeholder surveys. Those are going to start coming out. I think some schools are ready to send out their surveys. We'll also do some district stakeholder surveys. And that will, our state, our district level one will go on on Friday. And then the schools also have to summarize their classroom observations. So previously, this is a change because of COVID. The team that's coming to do our accreditation visit would typically go into classrooms, observe students, but they're not going to do that in the, in this current pandemic. So they're asking us to summarize observations and write up those and put those in their electronic tool for them to review. Go ahead, Shayna. So the district team, we've got a couple of extra things to do. We have to do the same self-assessment at the district level on the standards. We've already got our teams up and running on those. And Dr. Beam is leading a team on instruction. I'm leading the team on leadership and Esther Melton is leading up the team on the resource capacity. We're also going to be doing stakeholder surveys, reviewing those and assessing what that, what this, what those We're also going to be doing stakeholder surveys, reviewing those and assessing what that, what this, what those tell us. We also have to do system assurances and those are really yes or no questions. And they relate to things like, do we follow industry norms when it comes to using financial processes and audits? Do we have safety plans in place? So those are some of the assurances that we will check off, that we do all of those things. And then we finally have an executive summary just to kind of showcase high level of what we're doing as a district. Go ahead, Shayna. And then the final part of the process is what they, Cognia calls the engagement review. And that's a new term. They, I think they called it the accreditation visit previously, but now it's the engagement review. And there's a couple of things that happened during this review. First of all, it's a virtual visit. All of the meetings will be held via Zoom. We start that process with giving an overview of the district, what we've done, some of the highlights, what we're doing well. Just some basic demographic information and our staff overall, our student demographics. We also will have lots of stakeholder-focused group interviews. And really the process for the engagement review is they'll look at all of our documentation. They'll look at evidence. They'll read through that. And the stakeholder input and focus group interviews are very important for them to assess the standards that they're going to be rating us on. Because they want to hear from the people. What, if what we said in our documents is really the case for what's happening in city schools of Decatur. They also have lots of working time to make sure they finalize all of their documents and ratings. And then they will give us a, a presentation on those preliminary results on what they see. The good news is because we're already accredited, they, unless there's something totally egregious, they would not take away our accreditation. So we are really just looking for their input and help on what are some things that we could do as a district to grow and improve our processes. Go ahead, Shayna. So that's just the snapshot of the whole process and what's going to take place. You can go to the next slide, Shayna. So let's talk about the timeline. Go ahead, Shayna. So as I mentioned, training and kind of information gathering, that's already happened. That was October and November. Right now, the school and districts, they're selecting their teams. They're building those teams and training, doing any final trainings with their teams. And then they're really starting into the work. So digging in, rolling up their sleeves, going through the documents, doing their self-assessments, launching their surveys, summarizing classroom observations. Like I mentioned, already district and school surveys are going out. Our deadline to upload all of our documents is February 12th. And typical Dr. Furman fashion, that's a little early just so we have some, some wiggle room if we need it. But hopefully it's, it's an aggressive timeline, but I think based on the teams we're putting together, just the amazing group of people doing this work, I don't have any doubts that we will get to that timeline even earlier than the 12th. And then the next part, we've got to select our focus group. So we send a list of demographics and our staff and students to Cognia. And then they send us a list of here's how many teachers we want to interview from this school. Here's how many teachers we want to interview from this school. So that they get a good representation across all demographic areas in our school. And then just for your calendar, the dates for our engagement review and we will, we will have the Cognia team present virtually will be March 29th through the 31st. Go ahead, Shayna. So the last part is what is your role and how can you expect to be involved in this process? There we go. So there are two standards that are really about board governance. So Dr. Duddy's going to lead you through those self-assessments. So you'll be working on those two standards. They may select some of you for focus groups. They typically do like to talk with some board members. So based on what they tell me, we'll figure out who they want to select for their focus group interview. And then they will issue a final report. And if you want to attend and attend the Zoom for that, listen into that final report. We would love to have you at that as well. So as Dr. Duddy mentioned, because this is a very comprehensive evaluation and self-assessment, I think it's a really good opportunity for us to use this as a springboard to launch into our next phase of strategic planning. Particularly as I look at the engagement surveys that we have to do, it'll give us a good amount of information from different stakeholder groups. On what is their perception on how we communicate, what, how do we engage with our stakeholders? How do we use their feedback? So I'm really excited to hear any recommendations and, and suggestions that the team will have for us on any improvements that we have in that. So our plan is to really take this tool and then launch our next level of strategic plan. We'll already through this process have built some really key stakeholder groups that are providing input and working on these self-assessments. And I think that'll also be people that hopefully will want to continue that work and help us support to make a really rigorous and a well-developed strategic plan. So that is the process. Are there any questions from the board?
I just want to emphasize a couple of things real quick. One, first of all, thanks Maggie. Like many of you know, this is like Maggie's bread and butter is getting hard projects like this done. And I am just so thankful we have her on board because I know that when she says it'll get done, it'll get done and it's fantastic. So thank you for that. The, I think as you know, Maggie from the start has said, let's make lemonade out of lemons, right? And that this is, let's look at this as an opportunity and I just really appreciate that. And I was thinking about what she was about to say during Kunle's comments earlier of what are things we need to do in order to make up for all these challenges we've had since March? And it's so in that, in that regard, this is a kind of a blessing in disguise that we have this opportunity to do a deep dive. And that will very much be a part of that discussion of figuring out what are the next five years going to look like in order to make up for everything that we've experienced and our kids have experienced. So it really is, I'm glad that Maggie really pushed us to look at it as a positive thing because accreditation sometimes is not. And so I just really appreciate her leadership on that and I'm feeling good about it, that we are going to get into it and, and actually have some really good outcomes from it and make it a very useful process for us. So it's, it's very good. That's not how it always is. So I appreciate that. Any questions? And we'll have a lot more times to talk about this. Obviously, this will be an ongoing process. You saw the timeline there. And as she said, at some point, we'll want to schedule either a work session or retreat or something like that to walk through a couple of modules, but I'll work with you guys on that.
I don't have a question, but I did want to, and truth is, I was going to say some of the same things you just did, which I don't need to repeat. But the last time we went through the accreditation process, I was intensely frustrated because it was really amounted to a waste of time. I mean, I hope Saks isn't listening. Don't let them listen to this tape, Maggie. But they gave us, they gave us results that weren't actionable. We couldn't, we couldn't understand them. They, they graded us on a metric that they couldn't explain. And in the end, we just simply couldn't do anything with, you know, whatever it is that they reported to us. And so it was, it was just not a good use of anybody's time. And when David said that this is happening again, my first thought was, holy smokes, is it, has it been five years? But the second was, I'm so happy that you are leading this and that you've embraced it and that, and that, because this is what we need to do is, I mean, we need to be all about self-improvement. And we need to take this as an opportunity to make our own self-assessment and couple it with their objective third-party assessment and figure out what we need to do better and feed it under a strategic planning process. And so I'm excited to have you on board and to have that attitude because that's what we need. And so thank you for that. And thank you for your presentation. Is it the newsletter that's all that's left that we need to talk about?
Yeah, so thanks Maggie. The newsletter, we will do like normal. If you have any topics that you want to suggest right now, let us know. Otherwise, we will start with the ones that are just the most obvious for us. We'll get a draft out to you and so we can get working on that and hopefully get it out the same month it's dated. The October one was a little late. It actually went in November. But we'll try to get back on schedule. So do be watching for those when Shayna reaches out and says, hey, we need you to go, you know, look at this or edit it or whatever. If you could just get to that as soon as possible, that would help us keep on schedule and we really appreciate it. So any, any special topics you can think of that aren't immediately obvious that we should be putting in this newsletter? All right, if you think of any, let me know. We'll get it added in there and we'll get a draft started and, and shared with you. And then the final thing is the future dates. We've got our Thanksgiving break coming up, the week of November 23rd. And then our next board meeting, meeting is December 8th. And it is not in the year 20202 and the contrary of what it says, although it does feel like that much time has passed. But anyway, so I think that's it. I don't have anything else unless you guys do.
I do not.
I do not.
All right. Well, I think we are then adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for joining us. Thank, thank you.
Thank you to the 54 people who stuck it out and they're still here. It's awesome.
Everybody, have a good night.